Sign in sheet. Thank you. I want to remind everybody that our next meeting is Monday, next Monday, the 29th. We're going to begin the meeting with a workshop where we're going to cover the balance of the committees, commissions, boards, and not-for-profit entities that are requesting funds from the council. And then a regular meeting will follow that and will probably run fairly long because it includes some executive session time. So, under public comment, Lindsay Pylon.
Good evening. My name is Lindsay Pylon. I live at 16 Glen Haven Circle here in Saco. I'm president of the board of the Dire Library Association, doing business as the Dire Library and Saco Museum. And we're here to remind council of the fact that all of the work that the library and the museum do truly is in the public good. We provide services for a full range of ages in Saco and surrounding communities. Our primary concern, one of our primary concerns in the budget this year would be salaries. And our Dire Library Association employees do not get any step increases. So any increase that we do get, that our employees do get, comes through the city, for which we are very grateful. We are asking for a, the cost of living increase that would be the same as what the city has asked for, and that is the 1.9. And we are looking for an additional 1.1 to increase us to 3%, which would be approximately the Social Security Administration estimate of the actual cost of living increase. And I think this would cost the city somewhere around $4,900. So, we serve just an incredible number of customers, both in the library, primarily in the library, but the museum is also attracting some national attention. It is what we do for the city. Right now, the Student Art Exhibit is up, which is running, I think, through the end of this month. That is a compilation of work of schoolchildren from all over Saco. It's a wonderful exhibit. Please go if you can. Upcoming this summer is really a very important exhibit of Saco furniture. It's going to be 18th and 19th and, I'm sorry, 18th and 19th century furniture, primarily either built, made, crafted in Saco or from Saco homes. And Saco was known for its furniture. So it's going to be an exhibit that's going to attract attention regionally, if not nationally. This is a very unusual treasure for a city to have, and we are lucky to have it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is former mayor Don Pylon. Oh, there he is.
Don Pylon, 16 Glen Haven Circle. Each year about this time, it's spring thaw, we experience, we have a view of the Saco River on Glen Haven Circle. And each year at this time, we experience a flow of styrofoam, white styrofoam, in the river. And it's not just a little bit. It's clumps of white styrofoam flowing down the river from uptown. And it's happening now. And I, some of it's collected in front of my house, so I know it's white styrofoam. I don't own a boat, so I can't go out in the river and collect it. But my question is, do any of you, or perhaps the city administrator, know where it's coming from? And is there anything you guys can do about it? I suspect it is people putting in docks, or perhaps, I don't want to single anyone out, but the Saco, the Saco, what do you call it, yacht club, maybe putting in their docks. And underneath the docks is styrofoam, but it's a lot of styrofoam. And it's flowing down the river. So is there anything or anyone that could, within the department or city, can go out and check it out? Because it's flowing out the river and out into the ocean. And it happens this time of year. So I'm suspecting it's people putting in docks, but it's maybe the Saco Yacht Club or Rumries. I don't know. So can someone look into that, Mr. Mayor? Yes, no?
Yes. Mr. Sutherland will cover that in the administrative update.
Okay. Thank you.
Next up is Barbara Coleman.
Barbara Coleman, 45 East Stockman Avenue. Reading from the February 11 minutes is the following. It says, councilor moved, Melton moved, and Councilor Copeland seconded to state a maintenance of effort budget within existing contracts as they were supported in a 1-9% indifference to the senior citizen's social security cost of living, and that'd be our starting point. And everything above that becomes a RAD. Now, that was approved by, it was approved, the motion approved, yep, five yes and two nays. I had been looking at, for weeks, wondering why I could not get something. And I was looking at the budget overview, which is on page 18 of your budget book, and it will show up sequentially thereafter in each of the budgets. There's a new column from prior years. The column is fiscal year 219 approved. I'm sitting there going, sorry, not approved. Right after it is a dollar change one. I'm looking at this dollar change one, and I keep saying to myself, what do you mean dollar change? Are we talking of the appropriations that were done this summer, this past year? Well, no, because we didn't have appropriations to the school budget. We didn't have appropriations to half of these, and particularly not in the total of 1.1 million. So I'm wondering what this was, number here was. Fire came up, and the way, and it ended up doing is dividing it, and that becomes my 1.9%. Then we go to budget, directive budget. I'm like, wait a minute. We added fiscal year 219, we added 1.9, plus then we added some more additional funds above and beyond what the directive of council was to come up with a new directive budget. Then we added beyond that, the RADS and recommendations, and then we came up with a recommended budget. So when I look at the assessors office, and I do recognize that the various softwares have been moved into it, so these percentages will be slightly off because I didn't subtract that out, that budget increase from fiscal year 19 to recommend it is 7.3. Does that meet your 1.9? When I look at administration, it's 12.3. No way did we have that much in software going over to the administration department. I looked at contingency, 7.6. There's no contracts in contingency. And I just didn't bother to go any further. I do recognize, like, fire, police, public works, all probably have contracts. But my answer to you is, what was with the 1.9, and how did you end up with a recommended budget way above that 1.9% that you asked as a directive? That is for the council to answer.
Thank you. Next up is Mr. Steve Scheiman.
Steve Scheiman, 15 Bayview Terrace. I'm here to speak on behalf of the library. I'm on their board. This is, this is an organization, in my view, that is, is and has been well-run, and it operates very efficiently. It is a very important factor of the community's support for it. It raises a lot of its money from the community and from a lot of people in the community that both give money and gets, get wonderful services from the library. I feel that this is a terrific investment for the city. And the total of 1.1 in RADS and 1.9 in additionally requests from the city, I think is highly justified, and I hope you, the council, will support it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That's it for public comment. Let me drop back. I pointed out that there will be a meeting after the workshop on the 29th. That meeting includes the public hearing for the budget. So, everybody who has spoken to a particular budget tonight is certainly, and any other time, is certainly invited to speak at the public hearing scheduled for April 29th on the budget. Also, I'd like to point out that though Mr. Sutherland is going to speak about Earth Day, I think if we could have Parks and Rec in their cleanup, if there was some way to find a boat, perhaps the fire department has a aluminum boat that might be able to be put in to look for floating polystyrene when they do their parks cleanup. So, the next thing up is our friends at Saco Main Street.
Mr. Mayor.
Oh, excuse me.
Is the livestream working? Are we live going out to the public?
Oh, I don't know.
I was not able to access that through Town Hall Streams.
What's that?
They're working on it.
They're working on it. Yes. So, not yet. Any other questions before we get to Mr. Biggs's presentation? Seeing none? Mr. Biggs.
Being the first one to go, do you want us to stand up here?
Yes. Yeah, I'd like to have you stand up there. If you have any slides, I see that you do, and it looks like Mr. Sutherland is going to be handling that.
All right.
Okay.
So, I wanted to start out first with our mission, because a lot of people probably don't know exactly what our mission is. This was written about a year and a half ago. But our mission is to grow a vibrant, inviting city, encouraging innovation and economic development. So it's about having fun, certainly, but how we can certainly make a better downtown. We spearhead collaborative efforts to support businesses, to help diversify our economy, stimulate tourism, and tell Saco's story. So it's about history, it's about who we are, and it's about growing our economy beyond what we've got currently. So you can click that. So, I was asked by mayor and a couple of city councilmen to be brief, go quickly. We've got a lot to talk about tonight, so we will. We have six major events that we'll talk about as far as 2019. You can back that up. As far as 2019, yeah, don't, come on, Kevin. 2019. With that said, we'll talk about the usuals, the art festival, the car show that's coming up, certainly music in the park, and so on. But some of the highlights from 2018, specifically, we added to our flags on Main Street. We've got new flags, thanks to a lot of generous donations of people in memory of parents, friends, that were military veterans. Our Adirondacks on Main Street came back for the third straight year. We've made an announcement that we're going to do it again, and we've already got six or seven that have been sold at this point. So we're trying to do a major push, get about 30 this year out there, which would make us, would be really good, certainly. We found tourists, looking forward to them, coming back year after year. They've been purchased and gone as far as West Point. There's actually one down in Florida that went down there, and then the rest of them are all over, all over New England that people have bought. They're not just being purchased by people in Saco. We generated over 3,500 volunteer hours, helping us pull off these wonderful events that we throw every year, and other things that we've done, some cleanup and some park rework. I wanted to mention the Main Street Maine Unified Web Presents. All 10 Main Street programs in Maine now have a separate website that we all feed into, that is mainstreetmain.org. It's focused on tourists looking for authentic Maine experiences and not just the usual. So it's Skowhegan, it's Brunswick, it's Rockland, it's Belfast, it's ourselves, Bitterford, Westbrook, and Bath. And we're all included in this group. It's a wonderful website. You should all take a look at it sometime. And it feeds us as well as we feed it, certainly with our visitors. And we had a program last year that we're going to reinstitute this year, was quite popular on our Facebook page, called Come On In, We're Open. And I'll show a slide in a second about that. We started the Saco Scoop, and we've had over 26,000 visitors to date, started June 15th, and we're going into a summer, we're already starting to hit numbers on weekends that are as good as last August, so that's good news, certainly. The Come In, We're Open program is one that we started with our sign, and this is basically citizens from all around Saco. We've had quite a wide variety, several councilmen, mayor, city administrator, we have people on the street, and so on and so forth, people that live in Saco. And it's about us being open for business-friendly, us being open for people to move here, just to live, and people just to come and visit as well. We'll move on to the next one. So some of the economic highlights, we had five locations that were new businesses to Saco, or expansions of businesses in Saco. Expressions Boutique, Lady Namentch is a new bar on the corner. The Saco Scoop I mentioned, IHOP is in, what I refer to as Uptown. And then Whimsical Me opened, and is doing quite well. Some additions in 2019 that we'll talk again probably next year, but at the same time Cunningham Prosthetics, Maine Optometry will be opening in what used to be the cigar store. And Richetters is coming to Uptown as well, as we all know. I kind of feel like maybe some of that was due to Saco Main Street doing a good job in our downtown and attracting people to our downtown. We did two, had two news stories that were generated due to the enthusiasm and what happened at the Saco Scoop. And we had a full morning on News Center Maine with Katie Bavoso, and Jim Keithley came down and did a story on how to make hot fudge sauce that we make at the Saco Scoop on ABC Channel 8, on his cooking show. Next one. Holly Star was actually filmed two years ago, but came out this year finally, came out in December of 2018, to, people seemed to like it. It's been a lot of fun. Everybody enjoys seeing Saco and Bitterford in a good light, and it's projected out. A lot of people from away have commented on that, so. Events for 2019, this will be the sort of the list. We start out with, in June 1st, with our annual Bark in the Park. And then we move on, and that'll be to raise money to help make some improvements to the dog park. We raised a little bit last year, I think expect a lot more this year. And we're going to give a check to the city for that, to help them with that, specifically Parks and Rec. The 49th Annual Sidewalk Arc Festival has been sponsored by Saco Valley Credit Union, and that'll be happening on July 22nd. Our Music in the Park, Ee Lot, will be happening between the Dire Library and the Saco Museum. And that starts July 11th for six Thursday nights from 6:30 to 8:30, and goes through August 15th. The car show is after that, starts in July 20, or be July 27th. Long day there, a lot of fun, certainly. Last year, we had over 150, 60 cars on Main Street, and a ton of people coming to look, as well as bringing their cars. And then October, we're going to have the Pumpkin Harvest Festival, which attracted over 2,000 people last year. A lot of families, a lot of fun. And that'll be from 11 to 4, followed by the Holiday Festival and Light Parade, which I think most of you either have been to, or hopefully will come to this year. We had over 7,000 people in our downtown. The parade lasted over an hour, and it was a lot of fun. We had a great day. Before that, earlier in the day, we started with Santa Claus at the train station with crafts for kids. The library has their incredible Festival of Trees, that we have a shuttle bus, Zoom shuttle bus generously donated their time, moving people from the train station all the way to Dire Library and back with stops along the way. So you can move on to the next one. So positive look forward. These are some of our upcoming things we'd like to see, and that we're working on. We're working on economic collaboration with the city of Saco, both with the Marketing and Communications Group headed by Emily Roy, as well as with Denise Clavett in Economic Development, the Chamber of Commerce, where they've got a new executive director that we're working hard with, and the heart of Bitterford, obviously. Community collaboration with Parks and Rec and Age Friendly Saco, we want to do, we have an emphasis where we'd like to do more with our parks downtown. We're in the middle of, actually, the voting just ended yesterday for our, to see if we can make the top 25 for a grant that would be $25,000 that we would put towards Jubilee Island with Parks and Rec. We're looking to continue work on development and businesses in our downtown. We currently are 100% occupied on the first floor of downtown Saco, with the exception of a restaurant facility that is available on Storer Street. Some aesthetic improvements in our downtown that we want to get to. We'd like to implement a public art program. We've got several buildings that have an interest in putting a mural on the side of their building, and we're going to work with them on that and bring that forward as it comes up. Improved Christmas lighting has been requested of us many, many times. We are going to see what we can do there. As far as the new improved flower displays, we will have, I think it's 28 new large self-watering planters that will be placed in our downtown in the next probably three weeks. And businesses and individuals will be sponsoring those, the flower displays within those. And then finally, one that's near and dear to our board's heart, to my heart, is develop the Saco River Access for all of the public. Certainly Diamond Park is an area we could do more with, as well as the boat ramp at the bottom of the hill. We'd like to raise money to buy enough kayaks to work with public, or with Parks and Rec to develop a kayak rental program somewhere in our city. I'd like to see it at the boat ramp in the, in, just below the waterfall, but we can certainly talk about that. And that's to be developed as we go throughout this year. And then just some photos to kind of remind people of some of the fun in Saco. Pictures from our dog Bark in the Park, Holly Star filming, kid eating ice cream, having some fun, former mayor, Music in the Park, our light parade with the tremendous support from the Old Orchard Beach Synchronized Lawnmower Team, Batman, also known as Stacy Cody of Cody Funeral Home, puts a ton of time in with us, and brings kids toys and other things, and it's all at his cost. And he donates that to us. The crowd on the lower left was one view of our downtown during the Pumpkin Harvest Festival. It looked the exact same going up the other way. And we couldn't, you know, you couldn't even see the actual street surface. There were so many people here. So, as I say always, Saco, it's happening, and I believe it is. And if you click it once more, Kevin, suddenly it doesn't want to work. I want to thank the city of Saco, certainly. It's been a great partnership so far. I talked to Denise today. She told me that the, I'm sure she'll talk about it later, the TIF, downtown TIF has been preliminarily approved by the state, so things are good to go there. We don't come out of the capital budget. We don't touch the tax rate. We just help Saco become a better place to live. So, any questions?
Yes, thank you. Let me start off with just saying, you're going to have a Cabin Fever reliever. You had it earlier this year. I assume you'll continue that?
Yeah, we actually, and I didn't put that on the highlights because it's actually happened this year, but the Cabin Fever Reliever was a cornhole tournament and Taste of Saco, as well as beer and restaurants. We had over 250 people show up. 65% of them were not from Saco. They came as far as Auburn, and as far south as Berwick's, in that area. The other thing that was unique, and I think many of you did come, saw that most of them were all under the age of 35 years old. And it was a different demographic than maybe normally brought by Saco Main Street or some of our other events. So we want to continue that, certainly, as we go forward. Where, there's discussion of maybe a fall version, but definitely we'd probably talk about another one in March.
Thank you. Any questions to my right? Seeing none, any questions to my left? Mr. Biggs, thank you very much for your presentation.
I'd like to take two minutes and just have, where is she? My board president, Stefan Normantis, who's a resident of Saco as well, just speak a little bit about what she'd...
Sure. I just wanted to chime in. I'm a resident of Saco over on Jenkins, as well as a business owner on Storer Street. And I just wanted to also chime in to support the efforts of Saco Main Street. The reason why I'm involved and why I use my time to support the efforts of the board, as well as president, is really because I understand how Saco Main Streets and Main Streets in general are really economic drivers. They make the area more livable. It brings together the community in a different way. And it brings together demographics, whether it's dog folks, or whether it's kids watching the parade. And your investment in Saco Main Street brings back not just economic opportunities, but really knits the community together and allows people to gather and, and connect in a way that they don't often have. So I know your investment is certainly one that's considered, but we appreciate it and, and hope to have that continued partnership.
Thank you, Ms. Normantis. Next is our friends at the Dire Library Association. Leslie Rounds, how are you doing this evening?
Fine, thank you. Does that work?
It works wonderfully.
Okay. I'm Leslie Rounds, and I'm the director of the Dire Library Association. And we've been serving Saco, the library, for 138 years, and the museum for 153 years. So that's actually the first home of the Dire Library, City Hall. This is a picture from probably the late 19th century. And the second home of the Dire Library is right next door. Go again, and there's our present homes, looking pretty good, because we work hard to keep them up, but it's a constant challenge. This kind of talks about some of the challenges. I compared the Dire Library to some other sort of similarly sized libraries, and these are all numbers from the most recent statistics that the Maine State Library offers every year. Unfortunately, when they offer those statistics, they're already pretty stale. So this is from 2017. And you councilors also have a packet that have those things in them, which might be easier to look at. And I think it's pretty clear, when you look at the numbers, that the Dire Library is a very cheap thing to keep compared to other public libraries, that we're doing what we do very, very efficiently. And that although we serve an enormous number of people, we do it at a very good price. And we really sort of try hard to keep it that way. You can go again here. We're going to just cruise right along. So this is comparing just Kennebunk, Bitterford, and Scarborough, our closest libraries, with our total operating revenue. And even though Kennebunk actually serves quite a few fewer people, about 15,000, you can see that they have more money to do it with. Go again, please. Operating revenue per capita, again, pretty good deal. This is customers per year served, according to how many full-time equivalents. So, you know, how many each staff member serves. And that is probably right there, the primary reason that the Dire Library is relatively cheap to keep, is because we are serving a lot more customers per person than any other library around here. It's really amazing. This is not in your packet of papers, because this is a confusing sort of graph. And I want to explain it to you, and then I want you to just forget it, because I don't want you to be confused. Because the number... Because the numbers are only available from 2017 from the state, those blue bars represent, wait a second, I'm going to tell you what libraries. Kittery, Kennebunk, Bedford, Scarborough, Cape Elizabeth, Freeport, Brunswick and Bangor and Dyer. I averaged them all together, and those are the salaries per position in 2017. And the red bars are the Dyer Library salaries per position now. And I think that kind of makes the point of why the cost of living increases are important to us because there are no other pay increases and all we do is fall behind if we don't get them. And this year, it was made very clear to me in a very real way because we had an outstanding staff member who loved the Dyer Library, loved working there and left us to go work at Saco Middle School because they paid so much more and we just couldn't compete. And it was a very disappointing loss because she's a fabulous librarian. Go again. So I wanted to read you 13 Reasons Why Libraries Are Holding Us All Together, and I'll be really quick. This appeared in some major magazine a few months ago. Libraries are actual physical buildings where we can meet real people face to face and hold books in our hands. Librarians and library patrons do more to foster a love of reading than any other group of people. More children fall in love with books and ideas in libraries than anywhere else in the world. You can find anything through the library, from computer courses to foreign languages to just about anything else. Having fun isn't hard when you've got a library card. No, six, nowhere else in life are you encouraged to take as much as you can, but you can walk out of a library door weighed down by bulging book bags or struggling to see around the tower of books balanced in your arms. Seven, library programs such as Storytime's Book Clubs, Classes and more foster true friendships between people. Eight, because there's no commitment to purchase or store for the books, library patrons are free to explore any topic or author that strikes their fancy, whereas in a bookstore, you're very unlikely to buy anything unless you're absolutely sure it's what you want. Nine, this is a stretch, the Dewey Decimal System brings order to the world. Wait a minute, I've lost 10. Never mind 10, it's missing. 11, there's a beauty in a book that's passed along and read by many people. Some of them are also kind of abused, but you know, they're still beautiful. 12, signing your name for your first library card is the first rite of passage into being an active member of society. And don't you think that's true? And 13, libraries and museums hold local history, artifacts and stories, as well as being a resource for current local activities. So that's kind of it in a nutshell. This is Carl Finley from the Fire Department teaching us this morning how to use our new AED that was donated by the Rotary Club. And that's a very cooperative community there, I think. And then the rest of these are just pictures of people using the library. I did want to mention that the museum with our program with the schools, we're now serving about 4,000 schoolkids a year, which is an amazing number. And we have one 20-hour-a-week staff person who manages almost all of that. And I won't read all those things because you can do that. But, you know, it's a busy, busy place. And our programming for kids went up 15% in the last year. And when you, the only other library that's doing more with kids than we are is Portland Public Library. And they have, you know, the main and the branches. And we just have the one. So we do well. And see the pile of coats there? So I want to thank you all for your support. When I first started at the Dyer Library, this was a very frosty place to come to. And it's, it's not so frosty anymore, and that's really very nice. Do you have any questions?
Excuse me, Mrs. Rounds. Mrs. Pylon, would you like to add anything at all to Mrs. Rounds' statement? And so Mrs. Pylon is the Chair of the, or the Presiding Officer of the Board of Trustees.
Something needs to be said about Mrs. Rounds, actually. Mrs. Rounds saves Saco a lot of money. She does things like installs sump pumps, mows the grass occasionally, goes out on the roof to see the cornice that's fallen off or, and she knows all the specs of the geothermal system. We have a treasure here and she is part of the rest of the treasure that we have. So I encourage your support. Thank you.
She also, she also chisels into brick, as I remember.
A few of those things.
So, any, any questions to my right? Any questions to my left? Thank you very much, Mrs. Rounds.
Thank you.
And my regards to your husband. He's got a tough jaw. Mister, starts with an S.
Skavuzo.
Tony Skiozo.
Thank you very much.
Skiozo?
Skavuzo.
So you...
I can take care of it in a sec.
I said it earlier, didn't I? I'm sorry. Sir, your presentation.
Thank you very much. My name is Tony Skavuzo. I am the new Executive Director of the Shuttle Bus Zoom Organization. I also have Craig Pendleton here with me. If there happens to be any questions at the end, this is my fifth day as the Director of the Organization. So thanks for your patience. The counselor also has packets in front of them if they want to take a look at some of the information that's being presented in a little more detail. So a quick agenda. We'll go over the 2018 financial and ridership highlights. Next bullet, how Saco benefits from our service. Some budget challenges. The upcoming subsidy expense. Some accomplishments and some plans. And also some questions. Time, next slide. So some financial highlights and some ridership highlights. This slide will touch on very briefly. The red bars represent, well, this slide represents the Shuttle Bus and Zoom Ridership from 2016 to 2018 with the red bars representing 2016, blue representing 2017, green representing 2018. As you can see very quickly, the green bars are far outweighing the others. So we are a growing organization in ridership. Next slide, please. This touches on fares and revenues for ridership in calendar 2018. You can see our fare revenue is well over half a million dollars. Ridership also exceeding 330,000 riders and growing. Also, whoop, can go back real quick. Just broke out briefly the annual funding breakdown. You can take a look at as your, at your convenience. Fare revenue, 19% and so on. So take a look at that as you wish. Next slide, please. Services for Saco under our urban transit bucket, our shuttle bus service greatly is a force in Saco. And we are adding a Saco Industrial Park loom with the Pulse that is coming. We will talk about that in a minute. Our seasonal trolley service does touch Camp Ellis. And there's been some initial thoughts prototypically of a new loop connecting the Bedford and Saco downtowns. Next bullet, rural transit bucket. Our Zoom service to Portland is a service that is open to folks in Saco. Also, Portland intercity bus continues to service Route 1 from the Saco Transportation Center all the way to Portland. Special events that we support. Saco Main Street Christmas celebration, as was spoken on earlier. We've provided trolleys for high school state championships. And anything else that comes our way, we'd be happy to support. Next slide, please. Some budget challenges. Health insurance increases, that touches everybody. We're expecting the same increase for next year. Implementation of the Pulse system is going to increase our operational need. We'll touch about that in a minute. Several years of fixing some deficits in our budget have reduced the focus on our fleet and for infrastructure. Average fleet age is over 13 years. All our vehicles are at or above half a million miles. So focus is to get our fleet a little younger. We are doing more with less. Comparison with South Portland, they cover less area with the same number of vehicles. They get about 650,000 from the general city budget fund. We cover more area with a total parent contribution of about 420,000. So I've seen a lot of ingenuity and a lot of resourcefulness in my five days here. And I'm proud of that already. So we're doing as much as we can with what we have. Subsidy expense. Requests for 165,000 from each of the three parent municipalities. It's an increase of 25,000 this year as part of a three-year projection that was previously shared. This is part of an 80%, 20% agreement with the Federal Transit Administration for capital expenditures. So when we show we have 20% of that total funding secured, which that 25,000 is part of, we get access to the remaining 80% of the funds, which is 300,000 for a total of 375,000. So, so the increase is certainly well worth what we get on the back end. Some accomplishments and some plans. So what we've done with what we've had, improve the facility. We've eliminated all number two heating oil. It's all natural gas now. Changed the LED lighting. Resurfaced all paved areas and we purchased an electric bus wash. All efficiencies that have been gained. Plans for two new electric buses with the needed infrastructure for the fall of next year. We are looking into electronic fare collection. This will increase our operational efficiency and make it easier for users to use. Plan for new turnpike coaches. That's going to depend on some fun, extra funding specifics. Some telematics software is desperately needed. We will add GPS tracking. We will add video on the buses. And we will add video metrics collection software so we can become even more efficient with data collected. The Pulse will be the hub of shuttle bus service very soon, hoping for July 1st. It's going to serve as the center of shuttle bus activity. All route buses will return there in cyclical fashion. Every 75 minutes, it's going to allow for flexibility in scheduling, among other things. As mentioned before, we are adding the Saco Industrial Park service to our, to the Saco Industrial Park Loop to our service. Mentioned the proposed potential new loop connecting the downtown to Bedford and Saco. And the hope is for some permanent agency, leadership, community liaison and customer service to have a permanent presence there. I've just heard that a tenant is leaving there. So this is potentially in the offing. I will be learning more about that in the coming weeks. We can also not only promote local public transportation, but we could promote the ham track there as too, as well. Seems like a match made in heaven. Questions or comments from me?
Just a moment. The Vice Chair of the Transit Committee Board is here. Not in the audience, but at the DIES. Do you have any, do you have any brief comments on Tony's presentation?
Brief?
Please, brief.
Never. I want to welcome Tony. It's been a long four or five months to get from where we started to where we are now and have Tony on board for the fifth day. And hopefully he'll be back on the sixth day.
I will, you can count on it.
One of the things in the budget I did want to mention is that when the budget passed through, we flat funded at 140. Again, this year, there is a RAD that I've placed in the system for the additional 25,000. And I hope I have all of your support on that one. Since the other two communities have already supported it, it would not be good at the board meeting on Thursday if we didn't. Other than that, I can tell you that we have gone through a long introspective process as we secured Tony's employment at the shuttle bus. And the best is definitely yet to come. And we've got a lot of good plans for moving forward.
Thank you. Any questions to my right? Yes, Counselor Archer?
Skavuzo, just like it looks.
Just like it looks? You had mentioned that 20% health insurance increase. You just got here, so I don't want to interrupt. Have you ever looked at, have you ever looked at ancillary organizational insurance plans? Such as like quasi-government insurance?
Hey, Tony.
I believe they do.
So that's all part of the increase? How that quasi-government insurance?
It has been looked at. And upon my arrival, we are going to be looking at everything we possibly can to make it better and more comprehensive. Yep. It is, well, preparing for this presentation actually bubbled up to the top in my first five days, but we will be looking at that. You can count on it. Yes, certainly.
Thank you. Additional questions to my right? Seeing none to my left. Counselor Menthorn.
Counselor Archer, to help with that answer, one of the big issues at Shuttle Bus is the age of the workforce at Shuttle Bus. And there aren't a lot of new bus drivers. So there's a lot of old bus drivers in chronological age. And therefore, the insurance claims are usually a little heftier. So that's why we've seen the increases. We are on track to be looking, as Tony said, we are going to go out and look for bids coming up for calendar year 2020.
Yeah, let's point out that it is a bus service with mechanics. It's, you've got some office people, but you get a higher workers' comp rate if you're running a bus service and have a bunch of mechanics working on big things like buses.
You are correct.
Any additional questions to my left? Seeing none. Mister Sku, Skavu, Skavuzo.
Oh, you got it. There we go.
Did I get it?
Nicely, you had it the first time. I don't know what happened.
Okay, Mister Skavuzo, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
I keep, I'll keep saying that so that I get it. Next up, before we start, I want to recognize that there are a number of city employees present this evening. I see Mr. Roth, our Facilities Director, and Mr. Summer, Parks and Rec Director, Mr. Fox, the Public Works Director, Deputy Chief Clements of the Police Department, Emily Prescott of our planner, Deputy, and we have our Communications Director, Mrs. Roy, and our Executive Assistant, Ms. Gorman. And our Finance Director is here, and Ms. Solis. And of course, Mr. Sutherland. We couldn't go anywhere if we didn't have him, so. And for the Fire Department, I see we have a call firefighter and two Deputy Chiefs, Deputy Martin and Deputy Chief Pendleton, and our Chief DuRoss. Chief DuRoss, if you would, take it off.
Thank you. Good evening. Mr. Mayor, City Council, thank you for the opportunity to talk about the state of the Saco Fire Department and our budget request for the fiscal year 2020. Before we begin, we'd like to publicly thank the Mayor, the City Council, Saco City Staff and the Saco Community. As we all know, public safety in the state of Maine has suffered way too many tragic losses in the past couple of months. Your kind words and supportive messages were greatly appreciated. What many don't know is that Captain Joel Barnes from Berwick, as part of his EMS training requirements, was actually a student in Saco and participated in our preceptor program when the fire station was over on Thornton Avenue. And so that was a loss that was felt personally amongst many of our members. So again, thank you for that. The Saco Fire Department, through our highly trained and dedicated employees, strives to deliver the highest quality fire protection and emergency medical services in the most cost-effective manner through quality fire prevention suppression and emergency medical services. With the utmost regard for the safety of our citizens, our visitors and our employees, there are five areas that we've been assigned responsibility. Fire suppression, fire prevention, training, emergency medical services, and a fairly new area of emergency management. You can see our organizational chart. And the next slide actually helps to break that down. So maybe you can understand a little bit about, more about who we are. Currently, we have 72 employees who make up our Career Division, our on-call firefighters, fire police, support aides, and including five junior firefighters. We have 57 certified firefighters, one currently in training. When Matt finishes his training in the middle of June, will be 58. 58 is actually 100% of those who are assigned firefighting duties. So we'll have 100% certified firefighters. We have 15 certified fire and EMS instructors, six currently in a training. That's actually being hosted at Central Fire Station in cooperation with Southern Maine Community College. That'll bring us up to 21 fire and EMS instructors. We have 16 certified fire officers, 23 paramedics, five more that are in various stages of training, working towards their state of Maine paramedic license. Additionally, we have 14 emergency medical techn- Additionally, we have 14 emergency medical technicians at the basic and advanced license levels. We're in an operations-level hazardous materials response team. We are a decon support team with the City of Bedford Fire Department for all hazardous materials incidents in York County. We have several members who are special rescue technicians. They train in swift water, ice rescue, high angle, and confined space rescue. We have our below-the-dam and ocean marine rescue team, Marine Five should be in the water within a few days. It's timed with when the dredging operation leaves and Public Works is able to put the floats in around the icebreakers. So Marine Five will stay in the water from mid-May at the latest until probably early in November. We have several of our employees who are EMS preceptors. They work with Southern Maine Community College and other EMS education institutions to help train new paramedic and EMT students. We have a number of instructors for state and regional fire and EMS programs, and a lot of our members are involved in local, regional, and state committees for the betterment of the fire and EMS service. So the name on our building might be just a little misleading. We're more than just a fire department. We really are an all hazards emergency response agency. So to kind of set the stage for some of our budget requests, this is a total 911 call volume from the years 2004 to 2018. We chose 2004, that is when our IMC database came online for the first full calendar year. It is also the year after we increased our on-duty staffing from six to eight members per shift, and the difference between 2004 and 2018 is a 43% increase in call volume. That is 911 calls that originated at Store Street in our dispatch center. Also, I want to call your attention back to about a year ago, right in this room. The city contracted with Municipal Resources out of Meredith, New Hampshire. They produced for us an organizational assessment of the Saco Fire Department. Included in there were 95 total recommendations. So rather than reread the entire document, if I call your attention to Chapter 11, the conclusion, stats on or about page 177. It's 16 pages of recommendations. It starts out with the six top challenges that we faced, we'll go over those in a few minutes, the top seven recommendations. What we found already is that the data was mined about 12 months ago, so it's old. We're finding that we have to massage some of the recommendations for the changes that are occurring in Saco. And we're also finding that none of the recommendations are a one-and-done. They all require some ongoing maintenance, continued updates. So I've put, did you jump ahead? So there was the Google icon. It's kind of the roadmap for our budgeting process, and a little bit of the foundation of where we think the organization needs to go. So, a quick summary of the top six challenges that are in that organizational assessment. Providing sufficient and immediately available resources, that's people, equipment, and apparatus. Retaining an adequate and competent complement of fully trained and certified on-call personnel. Providing comprehensive training programs. Expanding our pre-fire planning efforts. Fully incorporating mobile and GIS data connectivity, and developing mobile data capabilities, and that's in the apparatus. And we'll talk about some of those as we go through the evening tonight. The top seven recommendations, develop a plan to ensure that on-call and full-time staff are more extensively integrated, respond and trained together on a regular basis. In April of 2018, hire one additional firefighter/paramedic to cover short and long-term absences. In July of 2018, hire two additional firefighter/paramedics. In July of 2019, hire two additional firefighter/paramedics. Initiate the design and development of a new substation in the northeast quadrant of the community. Concurrent with opening the new substation, raise the minimum on-duty staffing level to nine, and add a fifth engine company concurrent with the opening of the new substation. So those are the challenges and the recommendations that we're all working towards. Some of our ongoing accomplishments and a couple of new ones, we continue to do company level fire safety inspections. These are conducted by the on-duty crews. Each shift is assigned approximately 50 inspections with re-inspections per year. That brings our total somewhere near 200. Our fire prevention and public education, including CPR and EMS instruction, is a vibrant program, and thank you to the Dyer Library for giving Carl the plug. We continue to work in the schools in grades K through three. We work with businesses and civic groups to provide those services. Our fire and life safety planning department works with code enforcement and inspection, and really it's a lot more than that. We work with the planning and economic development folks from a new building, from the concept of the new building, through planning and development meetings. We attend planning board meetings, plan review, construction inspections, and company inspections upon occupancy, when occupancy permits are issued. As an example, Phase 1 of the Notre Dame Church, right here next door, a quick estimate is we had over 100 man-hours in that project in fire and life safety planning. Some other events, we always like to open the doors to the public. We do our annual open house that held earlier in the month was, again, a huge success. We're thankful that the Police Department invited us to participate in their National Night Out. We maintain a 35-year tradition of this Christmas lighting of Central Fire Station, a visit from Santa Claus on Thanksgiving night. And training. Training's a daily event in our industry. It's ongoing all the time. We do company-level training, we participate in regional-level training. Recently, we had one of the shift captains returned from the National Fire Academy where he attended a fire investigation class. One of the great things about going to Emmitsburg, Maryland, and the National Fire Academy, everything is paid for by the federal government except for the meal ticket. So for 10 days of training, two weeks, it cost us about $450 for meals. We have partnerships. We partner with the Boy Scouts of America. Our call division serves as an oversight committee for their organization, their local organization. We partner with the Red Cross on blood drives. Quarterly, we host a blood drive at Central Fire Station, and it's one of the more successful blood drives in, regularly scheduled blood drives in the state. Last year, we partnered with the Red Cross for installation and giveaways of smoke detectors, and we targeted the downtown area, but they got requests outside the downtown area that they were able to meet. And a new partner for us is Age Friendly Saco, working with the Knox Company in installing home boxes for the elderly. Well, this is a key system that allows our people, when they're called to that address, to retrieve a key, let themselves in upon request without doing damage to the property. So it's been a huge success. Some of our other major accomplishments that are tied to the assessment, and the recommendations are there, we're working through our integrated training with our career and on-call folks. Mobile data terminals, we've installed iPads in all of the apparatus. You can lump Roman numeral 5.17 and .18 together. We're working with the on-duty staff to create a new response and deployment model that essentially gives breaks for ambulance crews during busy periods of time. It partners senior people with more junior people for experience level. It's, all reports are right now, it's been a huge success. We were able to complete Roman numeral 6.2 and the staffing increase, working with you last year. At this time, we did add two more people to our career staff. We'll talk tonight, we've done some preliminary work on the substation, which we're calling a public safety facility, somewhere in the Route 1 North area out Millbrook. And the last two, you can also group those together. We've convened a focus group amongst the call division members, bringing them to the table, hearing what they believe their needs are, what we can do to continue the success of an active call division in the city of Saco. Some updates on last year's RADS, we completed the midlife rehab of Engine 3 in the fall. The total cost was $64,332, or $4,332 over the estimate. And again, we completed Roman numeral 6.2, the hiring of two additional firefighter/paramedics. So these are our major challenges as an organization. We've talked about the 43% increase in call volumes since 2004. A major challenge for us is our ability to meet our response time goals, our ability to respond quickly, arrive with adequate apparatus and staffing that are properly trained. Early arrival will improve our chances of a positive outcome of any incident. In 2018, we responded to 21 building fires, 10 of those in Saco. On 10 of the 21 responses, some of the on-duty crew were already committed at other emergencies, so we responded with less than what we feel is necessary. And one of our newest challenges is what we're calling simultaneous and overlapping calls. Increased incidence where multiple calls have left three or less on-duty firefighters in the station available for the next call. So we try to provide you with a little bit of a snapshot. I do have a laser pointer, so I can point to a couple of things. It doesn't show up on the screen.
Is it showing up?
Barely. So, this is two weeks ago, Friday, April 12th, from about 4:30 in the afternoon till a little past 11:00 in the evening. We had a total of nine calls. Right off the bat at 4:30, we had two back-to-back EMS calls that required additional help. That's when we send the fire truck with the ambulance. That's based on the information that the dispatcher gets, relays to the crews, it's built into our assigned running cards. It's calls like heart attacks, strokes, difficulty breathing, and we're sending four and five people to those calls because it's necessary by protocol in order to give fast, efficient, and effective treatment. Now, that was quickly followed up by a third ambulance call, fourth ambulance call, came back, had a little bit of a break, the fourth ambulance call in that period of time, and then a commercial fire alarm activation, had a business on the industrial park road. Typical response for that is two engines, a ladder, and an ambulance. Little bit of a break, and about 8:45 that evening, we had a fairly serious ambulance call in another area of the city, followed by a less serious ambulance call, but it still was an ambulance call, back-to-back ambulance calls, and we finished that even, that period of time with a motor vehicle accident on the turnpike. If this were August, it would kind of look what we normally do like in August and July. But it's April, so we're concerned about that. And it's not just this one period of time. If I actually showed you 6 o'clock in the morning on April 12th, it was very similar. There were five calls between 6:00 AM and 7:30. So those are our challenges. So I, at this point, I'd like to say thank you to Emily Roy and Ryan Panaro, with the help of Delaney Gobin, one of our firefighter/paramedics. Here's a scenario, what it really looks like. So we have two engines and a ladder truck at Central Station with two ambulances, and full staffing of eight people. First call comes in, and it's a two-vehicle response. In this case, might be a heart attack, but I could have easily set a chimney fire and sent an engine and a ladder truck. Takes five people out of the station, leaves three people for the second call. Second call is, maybe a less serious ambulance call is determined by our dispatch, leaves one person in the building, unless that one person happens to be on vacation. If that one person is on vacation, we don't backfill, we run with minimum crews of seven. Right now, we're estimating that only 25% of the time do we actually have full shifts of eight in the building. Based on earned vacation time, about half of the career force has been there long enough to earn the maximum amount of vacation time, which is good, we're not having any turnover. But it's leaving us many times short with, full staffing occurs 25%, approximately 25% of the time. So call number three, we would request mutual aid. The concern with mutual aid is, again, the quick response. There's always a delay in mutual aid, and I know for a fact that the City of Bedford is doing about 1,200 ambulance calls more than we are. So we don't always know if they're available. The town of Scarborough is growing, and their call volume is about the same as ours. Sooner or later, somebody's going to respond to that call, there's no question. We're going to respond to the call, but there is a built-in delay in mutual aid. Some additional major challenges that we're having, our transports to Portland hospitals has doubled in the last four years. Some of the reasons for that is Main Medical Center, is the trauma center, it's the cardiac center, it's cardiovascular center, and by protocol, those patients have to be transported there. As well as there are a number of residents in the community that have their, it, Main Medical Center or Mercy Hospital are their preferred choice. So last year, it was 476 transports to Portland hospitals. That's a two-hour minimum for those ambulances to be out of service. So last Wednesday, I'm sitting down at my desk, and I'm working through this PowerPoint, and in 20 minutes, somewhere around 1:30 in the afternoon, both ambulances go out, both ambulances transport to Portland. Some other major challenges we're having, hiring job-ready applicants. The graduating paramedic class at Southern Maine Community College consists of 11 graduates this year in May, and all 11 are already committed, whether they're going back home out of state or they, in fact, we've already hired one of them ourselves, but there aren't any new graduates coming in May that are looking for employment in fire-based EMS. So we're hiring less than paramedics, and we're making the investment. You'll see increases in our proposed budget to increase our training, to get some of these basic and advanced-level EMTs up to paramedic training. We're seeing increased costs in our service contracts and personal protective equipment. We've made some minor changes and requested increases in those lines. We're maintaining an aging fleet, and kind of just to put on your radar, the oldest fire truck in Central Station is a 93, followed by a 1996 in Camp Ellis and a 1999 in North Saco Station, and they're all going to need to be replaced soon. We're maintaining aging buildings. The North Saco Station was built in 1975, and the Camp Ellis Station was built in 1993. So these are challenges to our budget. We're adding additional monies, and these are areas that we're finding, these are the ones that are showing up in red on my budget spreadsheet, and we're using monies in other lines to cover those. And when we do that, that means other projects don't get completed. Familiar slide to you, these are the budget summaries. Personnel costs are 70% or better of our total budget, and we understand that. So I've changed, and you'll see asterisks under revenue, and the next slide will show you, we are taking in some money. Our ambulance fund is, continues to do very well this year, year-to-date. Our ambulance fund continues to do very well this year, year-to-date, as of last week, we're collecting almost $566,000, and there's the history. Our fire and EMS impact fee is on track, so far this year, we've collected almost $21,000 in fire and EMS impact fees. And now the requests above directive, we have five, and if you want to go quickly through these two slides, we can really get into the requests. So, our first request is to replace ambulance three, ambulance three is a 2012 Chevrolet Type III ambulance, the mileage as of last week was 103,000. It was actually recommended to the capital replacement committee through the Department of Public Works, scaling system to be replaced, it was pulled out of that budget, we're proposing to replace this budget using ambulance revenue, which is, by city charter, what the ambulance revenue account or ambulance fund is actually supposed to do. We estimate the trade-in value to be about $7,500, and what we know is, it's about eight months from the day we place the order until we receive it. So, if this is successful as a RAD, it'll be about this time next year when we actually would be taking delivery of that ambulance. That'll probably put the mileage on ambulance three somewhere around 125,000. Our second RAD is increasing stipends for the call division, it takes care of a couple of the RADS, the focus group, none of these folks are in it for the money. All we're trying to do is create a fair and equitable system, when we bring them in on a Monday night for training, we keep them there for three hours, and we pay them $25, that makes the hourly rate less than minimum wage. So our proposal is to get them beyond the minimum wage. It's been about 10 years since they've seen an increase in the stipends that they receive for coming back for required trainings or responding on box alarms, working fires. We actually have two RADS to increase staffing, we've broke it out. The first RAD is to add two new people, that would take our current staffing of 34 to 36 and make four shifts of nine. It certainly works to address some of the previously stated challenges, what it doesn't do is it doesn't raise our minimum staffing. It will help cover some of the vacations, it will help cover some of the long-term absences, but our minimum staffing would remain at seven. The second RAD is, there's where we would like to be, works to get 40 career members on the floor, four shifts of 10. The recommendation, Roman numeral 6.1, in April of 2018, hire one additional firefighter paramedic to provide a ninth person, we didn't do this. At the time when you received the report, the budget process was well underway, it was, I didn't ask, but it was too late to make that change at the time, and we had a temporary employee that because of a retirement, quickly became full-time, and before we knew it, July 1st was upon us. So, based on the assessment, we're already behind by one. And recommendation, Roman numeral 6.3, talks about hiring two additional paramedics to raise the minimum staffing level to eight personnel on duty. So there's a little bit of conflict in that recommendation, our goal is to raise the minimum staffing level to eight personnel on duty at all times, in order to do that, we need 10 people per shift. Here's another little demonstration, again, thanks to Emily and Ryan, of what 10 would now look like, using the same calls. And, one of the things that I didn't talk about is, not only are we going to raise the minimum staffing to eight, but now we can begin to utilize the third ambulance. So this graphic shows the third ambulance is now available for use, and we are able to handle what I'm calling day-to-day calls, no intent to sensationalize this, the world is not coming to an end, it's just the day-to-day call volume is what's really getting us a little bit. And now we'll be able to do three. The final one is Route 1 North Public Safety Facility, we've kind of changed this a little bit from a fire station, standalone fire station, and talking with the police chief, and what they're looking to do is to create a new patrol zone out in that area. If there is a public safety building built out there, they would like to have a little bit of space so that the officer that's assigned to that patrol area can do report writing and not have to come all the way back to downtown in order to do that, it seems to make sense to us, we're happy to partner with the police department on this. We're looking to use funding from the fire and EMS impact fee, I've been in touch with Wood and Curran, and for somewhere around $75,000, we think we can get to an RFP that will help us select a design-build firm that will give us a needs assessment, a projected cost, and a construction schedule. That will get us everything we need in order for the city council to make a decision on how we would fund it, if it was going to happen. So a couple of things that I intentionally didn't do, is I, I think you've heard enough about the projected growth out on Route 1, so I didn't feel, but I needed to say that again tonight, but that certainly is where a lot of our recommendations are coming from. And quickly, in summary, with a 10-person crew, what we're trying to get to is being able to have a dedicated three-person engine company to respond to a fire, we don't always have that. Getting a dedicated two-person ladder company to respond to a fire, we very rarely have that. We want to improve our response to EMS calls, and we just want to, as an organization, be in a better position to serve the community in what we're calling everyday calls. If the big one comes, then that's certainly what mutual aid was designed for and intended for. But we should be able to handle our everyday calls beyond the really abnormal stuff by ourselves. Are there any questions?
Okay, to my left, yes, Councilor Archer.
Yes, I have two questions, the first one will be to request to our city administrator. The chief presented a-
Speak more directly into the microphone.
Oh, my apologies. The chief presented a chart on the 2004 to 2018 9/11 call volume, can you provide counsel an overlap of the 2004 to 2018 population chart overlapping that, at least myself, but I'll open it up to the council? The second one is a couple-part question, when I heard that our call firefighters receive subminimum wages, are they, I guess this would be to our city administrator and to the staff there, is, are they considered employees? Are they authorized to be subminimum wage? And I could tell you, the only people that I would agree with receiving subminimum wage are the councilors and the mayor. The third one's not really a question.
I can address the question about the call firefighters. Call firefighters in the city of Saco are considered volunteers, and therefore, they sit outside of the regular set of regulations from the Department of Labor, both at the state and federal level, in terms of what they're compensated on an hourly basis. So that's the reason that they could be paid such a small amount in terms of hourly, but still be sort of an allowable stipend per the Department of Labor.
Follow-up on that is, where do our election workers, the ones that are actually on-site during our elections, are signing us in, allowing the voters to come in, what's their classification?
They're considered temporary seasonal employees, and they're paid at least minimum wage.
What is the difference between temporary seasonal employee and someone who is asked to stay on-site for three hours? It sounds like it's a demand issue, once we start requesting them to be present, I'm just kind of confused, and that's why I'm asking these questions.
That's totally fine, I'm happy, I attended the wage and labor compliance training a couple of weeks ago. Firefighters in general do fall outside, so election workers fall inside of the regular labor guidelines set forward, both by the state of Maine and the Department of Labor, but there are an entire set of caveats in the Fair Labor Standards Act, which sort of make firefighters, except firefighters from a lot of the standards, and volunteer call firefighters even more. So it becomes a matter of the city's discretion, and personally, I agree with you, that they should be paid at least minimum wage for the time that they put in, but from a legal standpoint, we're not under any-
From the morality as well.
Right, for sure.
How, when you have a call firefighter, I heard $25, is that for about three hours? Like, what does that equate to?
So if I may-
Yes, please.
Thank you. So, first thing is, call firefighters are paid quarterly, okay? So, they are given a quarterly stipend based on, and some of it's rank-based, firefighter is paid $200 quarterly, and what I tell them when I hire them, that's for your availability, I want to be number three on your list. They have full-time employment, or school commitments, there are, sometimes there are family commitments that cause them not to be available to be firefighters, I just, for that $200 per quarter, I need to be number three on your list. Above and beyond that, we pay them for attendance at training and attendance at box alarms. So, if it's a-
What would that wage be, if you're asking for hourly service?
Depends on how much we need them. So, the current rate is $25 for training that is anywhere from two to three hours. So, it will depend on the training-
Eight to three hours.
Training in subject area, and I still think it's not enough. A box alarm, a working fire, woods fire, searching for someone in the woods, is a flat-rate fee of $60, and that's for one hour, six hours, or 12 hours. But we have some flexibility, I certainly never would pay somebody $60 to be in the woods for 12 hours searching for somebody, we have some flexibility. It's a, right now, it's, is a good system that works, because we don't want to install a time clock and ask them to stop and punch in before they go to the fire, I've always kind of resisted that. I resisted that pretty hard. But I think it would be fair, and I believe the increase would take Monday night training to $40, to make it somewhere comparable to $13 or $14 an hour, depending on what they're doing, and a box alarm to $80, so if it's, sometimes you make, in the, as I stated before, I don't think any of them would stand up here and say that they're in it for the money, because I tell them when I hire them, you're not going to get rich on this job, it's community service that they all really want. I just think this RAD will create a fair and equitable, more fair and equitable system for them.
Because it's my concern, I'm not an expert, but I saw it in the news, that there was a, you would know more about this, there was a Central Maine call firefighter department that completely shut down, based on wages, and please correct me if I'm wrong, this was based on news articles.
I don't have the details on that one in particular, in general, people don't, are not wanting to enter public safety employment. Police department dispatches, firefighters, there's a national shortage of paramedics, and we're all trying to figure out how we're going to combat this. And I don't think $20 on a Monday night's going to solve the problem, but I think it's going to help.
Additional questions to my right? Are you all set? Any questions to my left, Councilor Mentor?
Chief, is there any way on some of those ambulance transports to outsource that to a contractor, so we're not tying up our resources that way? If we know ahead of time, we're going to take somebody from maybe Southern Maine up to Portland or whatever.
So, we don't do any of that work, that's already been outsourced, Seal Rock has a private service that takes care of the scheduled work, everything I've shown you tonight and talked to you about is a 911-based call.
Okay, thank you.
With one correction, we are the second service at Southern Maine Healthcare for a paramedic intercept with our inter-facility transport to Main Medical Center, and that's deemed to be an emergency. So if Benefit is not available to take that, we'll take that for them.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Smart.
Thank you, just so I am clear on this, how does it work if there's nobody at the station and a call comes in, does dispatch immediately route that to other municipalities?
Yes. There are instances where we'll do firefighter recall, if the officer knows that they're going to be out of the building for 10 minutes or longer, there's no one there, we have the ability to do a recall of a couple of firefighters, the requirements, they got to be like, they have to be back within 20 minutes, so some of our people don't even take recalls. But in general, the answer is, it's built into an automatic running card, and it picks the next available, so if our units are not available, it will pick Benefit, Scarborough, Old Orchard, Buxton, whoever's closest.
And just one further question, how does the ambulance fund work? How is that funded in the first place?
Revenue from transports, we bill at the 125% of Medicare allowable, essentially, what that'll do is recognizing the demographics of the city, and, so my stepmother used the ambulance the other night, and what we're hoping is, the end result is, at most, she'll have about $100 of money that was not covered by Medicare, and we, I know she has a supplemental insurance, so I'm hoping it's nothing out of pocket for her. So by billing at 125% above Medicare allowable, it's, it lessens the impact on a high percentage of our users of the service.
So that's generally just funded by? By, okay. By user fees, okay.
Yeah, the original thought the council had was, as presented by the fire department, was that that would be how replacement ambulances are going to be, would be covered, and I think Chief DeRoz pointed out that that was a council policy that identified that.
The billing rate? Yes.
And also, the use of those funds.
Yes.
Specific to replacement of ambulances.
Right, that's in the charter.
Thank you. So, is that it, to my right and left, I've got, oh, excuse me, oh, excuse me, Councilor Johnston.
My question was, what's the cost of a new ambulance now?
Yeah, right.
About $250,000.
Okay, and then, if both the personnel RADS were approved, this is just to clarify, that's six additional new full-time hires?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Copeland.
First of all, thank you for what you do, I know you try and be as efficient as possible, and I respect that you guys are highly trained, and we are very lucky to have you, so thank you. Impact fees, so a lot of the things that you're talking about are because we have more people here, more people there, and we're growing, so I'm wondering how, you know, not to burden everybody for all this growth, let the new growth support themselves, and I'm wondering how we could adjust our impact fees so that the impact falls on the people coming in?
So, an impact fee for fire-
Can't hear you.
Impact for fire is based on residential properties, new residential growth in the community. It's not, the impact fees aren't on any, on any commercial or any current residence, it's only on new construction in our community, on residential properties. Am I correct?
Yes, that's correct.
So it does try to do that, exactly what you said.
The only caveat to that, I guess, is if the project was previously in the approval process, when the impact fees came online, so we weren't, we weren't able to collect any impact fees for Mill 4, because- any impact fees for Mill Four, because that had started the process. So anything new now that's not already been previously approved, back to 2016 when we started.
Any other questions to my left? Any to my right? Chief, thank you very much. We're going to take a five-minute break, then at the end of that, Ms. Cadlec will present the human resources budget. So, five minutes, be back by five past. We're looking for an outlet to plug a laptop in. So is there an extra outlet associated with that monitor, or?
Hi, John.
Thank you, Dawn.
Oh, no, you're up front. He's down. Someone peed in the chair. What?
Hey, Mayor, we're letting you hold. Thank you. I'd like to call this meeting back to order. I'd like to call the workshop back to order. Thank you, Counselor. Some days I forget where I am, right? It's not, it's not a meeting, it's a workshop. We are in workshop right now, and we're going to receive a presentation by Ms. Cadlec on human resources, which is in your budget for-
I'm ready.
So, Ms. Cadlec, take it away.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. My name is Mayor Luke Cadlec. I'm the HR Director for the city. And tonight, I'll give you an overview of our department, along with an overview of the functions, accomplishments, and challenges that the department faces. My department is made up of Benefit and Payroll Specialist, Kristen Booth is sitting to the left, raise your hand. Thank you. Not many people know her. And the Senior Program Coordinator is Mary Starr. She's with us tonight also. Our department believes that through partnerships, collaboration, respect, that we'll recruit, develop, and retain a high-performing and diverse workforce, which fosters a healthy, safe, and productive work environment. The functions that are within our department are the Benefit, Compensation, Payroll, and Workers' Compensation Administration, along with employee relations and union relations. New to us about a year ago or so was the Senior Volunteer Program under my department. One of the major accomplishments that I'm very proud to say is that we migrated our payroll system from the MUNIS system over to paychecks. This was a success for the city, but it was due to the hard work and dedication of the city directors, the staff, and, to name a few, Ryan Panero, the IT Director, Glenna Salas, the Finance Director, and Kristen Booth, the Payroll Specialist. Without their continued effort and hard work, we would not have been able to have a 98% accuracy rate for our first payroll run, which was the second payroll in February. So kudos to the city. This was a very difficult migration. We continue to have some hiccups along the route, but we're pleasantly pleased to say that we had such an accuracy rate. The department continues to do the following. Minimum wage increases, we had 215 total this year. Incorporated the COLA increases for non-union and union staff. Ran the W2s for the city. And we continue to run our own payroll check, or run our payroll process of 525 monthly checks, along with 276 quarterly checks, and we run 23 monthly vendor checks. Vendor checks for us are, whether it's retirement vendors that we have, or benefit vendors. Also this year, we migrated from Boston Mutual for our short and long-term benefit, and also our Delta Dental we left for YNAM. In doing so, we negotiated a locked-in rate for the city with no increase until after 2021. We lowered the premiums for the employees and the city by doing this, and there was a cost savings of approximately $10,000 for the city in doing so. What we incurred by doing that is, we have a portal for our short and long-term disability benefits, where we provide the information. So we've incurred that part of the administrative side. Instead of Boston Mutual preparing all the documents, we do it inside. I upload all the information. There's more confidentiality in regards to doing this. And YNAM will in turn contact the employees directly, so we're out of it, so there aren't any HIPAA violations. So this has been a very good move for us. We have changed our occupational health vendor from WorkWell at Southern Maine Healthcare to Concentra in South Portland. And the reason for doing this was to have more consistency and monitor the compliance. We were using various places. Concentra is a one-stop shopping, so if an employee is injured, they have imaging, they have PT folks on staff, so it's not driving around looking and seeking assistance. They all talk to each other, so it's better care for the employee and monitoring the progress. Job descriptions, we updated the clerical staff job descriptions thoroughly prior to the union negotiations, and we continue to update the job descriptions as openings are, as openings occur. Directors are given the job descriptions back to be sure that they are continuing to progress with the position. And then we had successful union negotiation of six unions. The next slide gives you a head count look. I'm pleased to say that, as I indicated to some of the council a little while ago, with the HR splitting from finance again, we now try to better monitor what's going on with the data with, inside the department. And I think in the past, it's just been kind of hidden underneath the finance layer. So you see from 2016 to 2019, right now, we have 100, these are full-time benefit-eligible employee, the count that we're looking at. So we're at 170 currently. Employee activity, this gives you an idea of what we do inside of our office, which is the new hire, or onboarding and offboarding of our employees. So you'll see the different colors indicating the new hire. Our seasonal take a lot of time and energy for the department. We're under about a six-week period to background check, review the paperwork, and process uploading it into the payroll system and the personnel side. Each new hire has approximately 10 forms that are filled out, reviewed, forwarded on to whatever retirement benefit program that they're eligible for, and filed accordingly. Your resignation, termination, and retirement, our offboarding, and there's a numerous amount of paperwork that takes in order to process Work injuries. We've had a good year so far. You can see in the past, the injuries are the work-related injuries that are forwarded to HR from the organizations. They either called into MMA and processed, started the process for a work injury. The good news is, in the green, you can see that the, there's not much lost time in regards to the injury reports that are processed. So we have done a really good job at, at least not incurring a lot of cost towards our workers' comp. So even though those were processed, it does not necessarily mean there's any lost time to them. The disability processing gives you an idea of the non-work-related injuries or health issues that employees may have. They'll come to us for the paperwork. We start the process, worked with the physicians, et cetera, et cetera. So currently, we have long-term and short-term in 2019 that we're working with. But you can see that, and there may be overlap, our '18 and '19 may now still be in the LTD process, or our short-term might have just jumped off and gone into the long-term disability. So this, these are the numbers. 2017 were Our volunteer program, Mary Starr is a volunteer program coordinator, and she's done a phenomenal job in communicating and working with this program. This has been a difficult year for the program in regards to process, tax, et cetera, et cetera. But I believe that she has been able to keep some of that at bay for the volunteers and try to run a productive program, knowing that there's some things in the background. Mary has, Mary's in charge of the scheduling, the, she does training. She started the meet and greets, and done a really great job at trying to keep the seniors involved in programs with the city. She has brought forward recently, that I think it was Friday, Mary, on Friday?
Oh, okay.
Yeah. So the Act to Enhance Senior Volunteer Benefit Program was approved at the state level, to go into effect late summer, early fall. What that will do is raise the maximum of the 750 tax credit to $1,000, or 100 times the minimum wage currently, so that would be $1,100. We look forward to working with the council and deciding what program or process will be put in place in order to adhere to some of the new requirements. You can see from this, the volunteer locations. Train station is the most active with the volunteers, and probably the most difficult currently to maintain, various reasons. There are many, many reasons as to why we lose the folks over there. So that is constantly looked at, and Mary has done a great job to try to keep people over there at the train station. The other side, as you see, that our volunteers are currently active in other city locations. Major challenges. This isn't anything that none of you are unaware of. Recruiting nationally has been very difficult. John indicated the, prior to my presentation, trying to onboard or bring qualified firefighters. Same with the police. We have issues in trying to just hire qualified individuals. So it's, I've talked to Kevin and said that it's not, certainly it's a national level, we have a state issue, and we can't keep poaching from other municipalities in the state. We're not doing anything, or anyone any good by doing that. So it's really trying to come up with creative ideas, and working as, I believe, a state to figure out how to do this better. So when it lands back in HR, and we're told that either we're not effective, or what else can we do, there are a lot of reasons why we may not be able to fill that position. So we have conversations with the directors to assist and address. Retention, I can't say we've had a ton of trying to keep our employees here. We've had some issues, but I think a lot of it is to maintain the strong benefit footprint that we have with the city. To think that we are going to cut benefits or whatever, will end up losing many of our employees. employees. We can't do that. And to provide a positive workplace, but also to discuss as directors with our staff, the importance of life-work balance. We hear that there's more work, less employees, but how do we work with our employees to indicate that they still are valued here, but how can we assist in that life-work balance? Very important. Policies. A challenge with policies, I have not had an enormous amount of time with the changes that we've done in order to review policies. I have assistants right now in reviewing policies that we will, and in the employee handbook that we bring forward to the Personnel Committee, but look for council for approval. But that is a work in progress. Payroll. We haven't had enough time in the short time that we implemented in order to work with paychecks, to write up actual software programs, to identify some areas that we could be better collecting data for. The other piece is increasing employee self-sufficiency. I've put on SharePoint, many of our forums, discussion on how to fill out the forms and processes. But I haven't had the time to go out and train staff to say that this is really where you should be looking before calling HR, to have the employee take ownership on their benefits and their processing, I guess. We had a RAD in 2019 for professional development. And in this particular case, it's, that says we didn't utilize, but no. Instead of using the amount, we basically had our, we basically had our internal staff to our training. So we had a, we used funds from UnisTraining. And for the paychecks piece, we used internal individuals. That would be Glenys Solis was assisted, and also we did a FaceTime with paychecks. So part of that was used for that. There are funds left over, and I'd like to suggest that we reallocate to support a compensation analysis with the city. When we're talking about retention and recruiting, from what I've seen is back in 2014, there was a, a report that was done with the previous mayor, I guess. And out of that report, the council decided not to take action for the findings. So our wage and salaries haven't been looked at. The job descriptions in the grade, I don't even know if they match. I don't have any information as to when the wage in the grades were implemented. I think that to go out and recruit for our city without having the information available, right now, we're saying, that's what we pay, and this is the reason why. This is the grade, it's a grade eight, you follow it between this minimum and the maximum, and we're going to go for that. I really believe that it will do the city a great justice in putting accurate information around where we stand, and that hasn't been done in years. So I don't even know at this point whether we're on or off. I've talked to individuals, we do salary surveys in the state. Some people have done evaluations or surveys and have been very pleased with the fact that they feel that it has positioned them to be more competitive in the state for recruiting. Budget summary, same as everyone else's. The salaries is the highest with the basic percentages. Same with the budget summary. Request above directive, I'm looking down at an administrative assistant to assist with our productivity. The one-time cost of computer and equipment, 2305, and 37196, to bring the RAD to 39501. The city administrator is reducing a position in administration to offset the cost related to the position, about $24,000. And that can be reviewed in the budget book at page 81. I'm also asking for some additional funds in order to advertise and work on trying to be more proactive in doing the recruiting. Administrative assistant, this is what we're looking for the individual to be doing. The other part, which isn't, I didn't put up there, is that the HR staff reports to multi-site to do operations. Kristen goes off to the fire department probably twice a week for a good chunk of time, maybe three hours, in order to review time sheets and quarterly pays, et cetera, with John and Nancy. So she's left the office for three hours. I may be off-site doing employee relations somewhere else, so the office is not being monitored. So you're getting the phone call. I've heard that we're not being responsive to employees and their needs because we're not there. We can't be everywhere. Administrative assistant would be able to field the calls, direct them to the SharePoint for forms, et cetera, and schedule appointments so that the employees feel that they're being heard. That, along with residents, I have people outside candidates that have been calling saying that we're not returning the calls, we can't if we're not there. So it's not a real good look for our department, but also for the city, because we can't get back to them in a timely fashion. The next is the advertising RAD, really to expand our recruiting efforts. I use Maine Employee or Maine Municipal Association. We use Jobs in Maine. We've used Indeed, and that has not been effective whatsoever. We've gotten, we haven't gotten qualified candidates. I started using LinkedIn about two weeks ago. That's $15 a day for advertising. And I believe we have two for one position that is open, which is surprising because LinkedIn is so connected. So it's really trying to figure out where and how we go about our recruiting. On-site recruiting opportunities, I haven't had any opportunity to go to, whether it's Southern Maine USM, UNE, any of the universities in the area where I can at least become visible to the recruiters or the, I was going to say their program directors in order to at least talk about what we have to offer. In conclusion, we're going in the right direction. We've made a lot of changes this year. We have collected more data than we've, than I've been able to see in the past. And we're really trying to, I say, put the train back on the track to really see what HR is doing and where and how we can be effective for the city and also for the employees. So thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Any questions to my right? Seeing none, questions to my left. Counselor Copeland.
Thank you very much for your presentation. Certainly, our human resources are a very big part of our budget and a really big part of the service that the city offers. So we have really great people, and I'm appreciative of that. I am concerned about the headcount continuing to rise. The new administrative assistant, is that, you know, I don't want to overwork anybody, but maybe there were other people with some capacity that could fill in. If nobody's there, maybe the phones could go to admin, or maybe they can go to the school admin person, or, you know. I don't know if there's capacity for that. Certainly, everyone should get a phone call back. And I'm not saying that there's not a need here. I'm just wondering how we can solve that and if we can multitask it a little bit.
So I hear what you're saying. However, due to the confidentiality, the personnel files, the information in the organization, I'm hesitant to have a volunteer come in and just start working on files or calls of personal nature. And I think that's one reason why we don't really bring an attempt for the same reasons.
I would certainly agree with that, and I wouldn't go in that direction at all. And it's very important that everyone's confidentiality remains confidential. But within the city, you know, you're saying that phone calls aren't returned. Maybe if, maybe it would be helpful to the staff to, to get someone live to answer the phone and say, you know, I have a problem, and I'd like to speak with HR, and just take a name and number. Or if they have a SharePoint issue, maybe somebody else, maybe I don't know who could help them with that. So they get a live person and they get that, that interaction.
Again, I hear what you're saying. It's important, but it doesn't assist me in being able to get out to do the other things that aren't being done. We've talked about not having a recruiting strategy. I can't get out of the office to even consider going in and traveling, meeting with folks to be able to talk about the opportunities that the city has. So I do hear what you're saying. I definitely will look into it. I'm not saying no to it, but I'm just saying that it's a, it's again, how do we make it work for all? But most importantly, I say for the city and the directors, I'm trying to be able to be more in tune to the response time. So I hear what you're saying, and I definitely would look into it. It's not that we haven't. We've considered volunteers in those positions. Not being able to be sure that the volunteer will be there, as Mary has indicated with the amount of transition. So I appreciate it, and definitely, it's not a knee-jerk reaction, believe me. It's been a difficult call because I know that the headcount is a major issue to not just the city, but also the residents.
May I ask, Kevin, do you have any insight in this?
Sure.
Because you get the big picture.
Yep. And, and part of the reason why the, the, the cost of this RAD is a little bit lower than what the actual cost of the position is and all of the additional components of it, because I've reduced a position within administration to cover this. I believe this is a more important need in our organization than having a grants and projects specialist. Our department already handles, helps assist administration in a lot of different respects. And in fact, during my presentation, you'll see some of the examples of how we're assisting HR now in a lot of the recruitment efforts because they're so strained. And I don't know if that's a product of a strong economy where you do have a little higher turnover, but I, you know, you look at some of the slides that Mary Lou prepared for you, where you talk about the turnover and what the amount of time it takes to bring new people on, onboarding, in addition to employee relations, in addition to this-year union contracts. It's, it's piling up to the point where I see a greater need in human resources than I do in having a grants and projects person. And I'll talk more about what my intention to do for those roles are in our organization during my presentation.
You mentioned a life-work balance. I think that is critical to having healthy and engaged employees, and I would suggest, you know, a survey. One of the other things that we hear a lot about is, are the, is the, and it is a budget issue, because I'm told that there's, it's not a priority. The W2s for the seniors that have, have been a problem. Where are they on the priority list?
I'm going to give that to Glenys. Thank you.
So thank you for that question. So as part of the wage and compliance training that I went to, I spoke with representatives from the Department of Labor.
Good.
And asked them if, because the Department of Labor has a really nice customer-friendly program where you can sort of go in and self-report any issues and reconcile your payments properly. He indicated to me that from a Department of Labor standpoint, actually, we have no issues, because of course, the seniors were always paid above the federal minimum wage if you divide their tax rebate by their hours. And additionally, they never worked more than 40 hours per week. So there's not any need to do any work with the Department of Labor, because the way that we were paying the seniors in the past, the 750 for the 100 hours, is on the books in the state of Maine. The Maine Department of Labor also has no interest in sort of going after municipalities who have done their best with this program. From an internal revenue standpoint, I did reach out to a contact at the Internal Revenue Service and asked, does the IRS have interest in having these W2s back filed historically? He said it was over his head, too complicated. He directed me to the business line at the IRS. I called the business line at the IRS, and she indicated that the crucial thing from an IRS perspective is that we have identified the issue and fixed it going forward. She couldn't find anything in any of her manuals that indicated the need to backfile W2s. As a third check, I went back and reviewed all the documentation related to the IRS audit that did occur in the city of Saco in fiscal year 2017. As a part of that audit, there were 64 individuals who had been paid as contractors that the IRS deemed to be worthy of employer, employee status. In that case, they only went back two years. They levied no fines or penalties to the city of Saco. They simply requested that we submit the employer share of the taxes that were owed and fill out a couple of forms that would simply tie the issue out. So based on all of the research that's available to me, including my conversations with the Internal Revenue Service, it seems to me that nobody is really interested in us sending a bunch of W2s that go back 10 years or in filing any kind of additional taxes. In the case that the city of Saco were to undergo an audit related to this program, again, it looks like the IRS would only go back two years, and that would translate into a maximum penalty of about $6,500. Our, our unassigned fund balances at the charter mandated maximum of 10%, which means we have $5.5 million in the bank. So I think in the case of an audit of this program, we would be able to pay whatever additional taxes the IRS would be interested in. In addition to that, based on all of my experiences interacting with the IRS over the last two years, it is not a good idea to start sending the money in forms that they haven't asked for. It's not a very sophisticated organization. They're still using software that dates back to the 80s. And if it's something that doesn't fit with what they're expecting, the likelihood of them misfiling it or misapplying the payments is quite strong. So I put all of those findings into a memo to our city, to our city auditors and requested that they review my findings and provide any additional feedback that they might have. But we have taken all the right steps. We've self-reported to the IRS. We've discussed the issue with Department of Labor. And at this point, I think that we need to simply hold to the information. And of course, all the information, the interactions with the IRS are part of our permanent record. So if we ever do have any issues or challenges, I can go back and say, well, we tried to self-report. Here are the emails. Here are the responses I received.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any, are you all set, Counselor?
Thank you.
Any additional questions to my left? Counselor Smart.
Thank you. Can you just clarify for me that $24,000 line item? What exactly does that relate to?
That's a reduction of administration's payroll line, salary line for, out of the grants and projects specialist. You'll see that one of my requests is for a communications coordinator, someone to work under the marketing and communications specialist. But the $24,000 is a savings from those two different positions.
Thank you.
Any additional questions? Counselor Johnston.
Kevin, you previously indicated when you and I had spoke about the executive assistant position, that that role would also have phone coverage for other departments in the annex. Is that correct?
I had hoped for that to be the case, but as you'll see in my budget presentation, we have, we have enough of our own increased demands within the department to try to accommodate that as well. And, and again, our department has done a lot of assistance in terms, both, both of the women who work in my department have been assisting HR on a variety of projects to get us continuing to move forward. So we're already allocating quite a bit of time, and I'd like to, I'd like to be able to put enough support in HR so that my department can focus on some of the even broader to put enough support in HR so that my department can focus on some of the even broader needs within the community.
Thank you.
Counselor Doyle and then Counselor Archer.
Thank you, Mr. Mary Lou. Thank you for the presentation. I just have a couple of questions on page 82 of the line item budget that I want to, that I want to look at and get some clarification on. So if we look under fees on page 82, in 2018, we spent $225, it looks like. FY 2019 approved was $225. And then it looks like the directive budget came out to $1,000, which is $775 more, almost a 400% increase in just fees. What are those fees for? The question was to you. Oh, okay.
It doesn't matter who answers the question.
And there's a, so if you go to page 82, which is human resources line item budget, there's a section called fees. And if you go to fiscal year 2019, you've got approved $225 and a change to $775. Directive budget of $1,000.
So I'll answer just a preliminary, more general response and then allow Mary Lou to enter into the specifics. So when we developed the directive budget, of course, the directive budget was contracted increases plus 1.9% allowance on all other line items. However, we do give to our department heads discretion. So for example, not every line item in the budget is going to go up 1.9%. Perhaps one line item is going to go up 5 or 10% and a lot of your line items are going to remain the same. And so what we did when we calculated the departmental budget was that we calculated contracted increases for union salary lines or 1.9% on our salary lines. And then we just sort of multiplied 1.9% times the rest of the remaining line items and then created a single departmental budget that it was then up to the discretion of the department head to allocate. And with that, I'll defer to Mary Lou on what specifically the plans were, plans are for the due to membership line.
The fees in membership are for, there's a $300 fees for personnel. There's SHRM, National Organization, where we get information from. We also are members of the Southern Maine Municipal Human Resource Organization in the state, ICMA, out of the National Organization. I think that's a $300 fee also from the HR side of it. So those are the fees that I believe when Cheryl Fornier was here, I think I had $100 for a membership. And I remembered saying to Kevin last year when the budget went through, I was already overspent because I couldn't get a membership into the national HR organization of $300. So for me to be able to at least not utilize, I feel, legal counsel if I'm looking for accurate and legal information from some of the other organizations, I'll go to there first.
Okay, thank you. And, and also under fees, computer software, there's nothing budgeted from 15 all the way up to 19. And then there's a directive budget for this year with a change of $16,678.
So again, that was part of the reallocation of software expenses from the IT department. So if you go to the IT department, you'll see that the IT department's had a significant drop in expenses this year because we took all of the software expenses that were departmental specific and reallocated them into the departments. Specifically for human resources, this particular line item is for paychecks.
Thank you. And also going down to travel and training budget, and I'm specifically looking at tuition and training, it looks like we spent $10,709 in 2018. FY 2019 approved was $13,000. Looks like we've spent $253,00, excuse me, $253 as of February 2019. And then we're looking at a directive budget of remaining at $13,000 when we only spent $253 this, this year. So that might be a little inflated and we might need to bring that down until the point that we have the ability to utilize that kind of funding. And this might be where the discretion, Glennis, you were talking about, is I don't think it was council's discretion and, and every counselor can speak for themselves, but I, I think when we gave the directive a 1.9%, it was 1.9% total budget, not 1.9% of each individual line item or each individual department. And I think there might need some clarification there. But I'm just looking at it because it, you see it again in travel. In FY 2018, we spent 630. FY 19, we approved 1,500. We've spent $578. So why would the directive budget this year, once again, be $1,500? Because we're not spending that money. And guess what happens if you don't spend money? That money rolls to somewhere else. I've learned that a long time ago. So if we're not spending it, we, it shouldn't be budgeted. And if you need more, because things have happened, come and ask for more. But we shouldn't be over inflating our budgets with monies that we're not going to spend. It should be in, it should be in the general fund and then come and ask for more money. And so that's just my personal opinion.
I appreciate that. The, the increase in training for me would be, I have an opportunity at this point. I have an opportunity at this point to have Kristen Booth, now that we have paychecks up. She hasn't had any, any training, not even on the payroll side, except for MMA. And what we're doing with MMA is it's about an 85, maybe $100 in the training. We've also, with Mary Starr with us, is that I've asked Mary to do some training also. She may be a volunteer or a part-time employee, but I believe it's real important that she be treated just as the others in my department, that she could be a wealth of information also. She's in part-time. She could handle some of the questions that arise and come through to her. But I also believe that in regards to the volunteer program, it's important for her to get out, do some training. And also more recently, she'll be going up to the state to do a presentation on the volunteer program itself. So I believe that these two have an opportunity, again, to showcase and train in regards to more succession planning, I think. Being able to back up the payroll and the benefit side, I, I would say especially for Kristen, without having direct knowledge and being taught through paychecks at this point, but I believe that there's more training for her to, to, to take where she hadn't been able to do it last year.
Sure. And, and while, while it might not be a discussion for tonight, I'd love to know what our role is going to be at that senior abatement program discussion because it seems like we've had a constant three-year battle of trying to solve what the senior abatement program is. So it might not be a discussion for tonight, but it's definitely a discussion worth having.
Thank you. Mr. Sutherland, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Yes, I just, again, part of the, part of the presentation included the RAD update. And again, we didn't, haven't spent that $10,000 because we've been so focused on payroll migration and utilizing staff for trainings related to the payroll process. So I anticipate, and again, $10,000 of that was for an organizational-wide trainings, not just the HR department. That 10,000, three, maybe 3,000 of that was, but 10,000 was for trying to bring in a professional or working with a larger number of staff. Again, and what Mary Lou talked about was trying to use those dollars between now and the end of the year for a comprehensive analysis, bringing in a professional who can help us, assist us look at our wages, our job descriptions and the grades and make some recommendations for a report, through a report. Last time it was done was 2014, prior to my arrival. That is an outdated document and is not extremely helpful for us. It was never approved or, or utilized by this council and I'd like to look at that again. We don't have a pay philosophy in this organization. I'd like to get to a point, point where we have one.
Thank you. Counselor Archer.
Yes. So the first part is I'm very wary with defunding our grants and projects unless you have other information. Did we receive more revenues than it costs? And that's understanding Brandon's unfully realized work that he did that we may get later. If we, if we didn't, if it wasn't determined to be a great benefit, then of course, let's get rid of it. But if it is, I mean, I just see a, I see a cost, a long-term cost that we're losing by not going out for these grants and having specialists do it. The part that's related to HR, which can be a shared response, is do we need the administrative assistant? And what I mean by that is I'm looking for the greatest benefit. If we have an administrative assistant, it will limit the scope.
Thank you.
It will limit the scope of the position. What about increasing the staff to have two HR generals, which have a tad more flexibility to meet some of the needs of our organization and our community?
Well, I'll answer the first part. I, I will talk about the, my, what my intent to do with the grants and project specialist as part of the administration's presentation. And I, and I hope the council concurs, but can I save that for that one? Okay, thank you. I have no objection to the council giving more money to HR for additional position. But again, I think the biggest concern is somebody at the office all day, nine to five, someone there to answer the phones, someone there to handle the walk-ins. People do walk in to see facilities sometimes. That person can handle, essentially handle the annex traffic. So it would assist facilities, it would assist IT who's moving over there, and it would assist human resources. So it isn't just a one department answering the phone. It is, provides some services for anybody who shows up at that building.
So would this mean administrative assistance to three different organizations? Would it meet the needs of three different consumers?
I, I would argue that that could be made, that could be doable. You could have that person as.
I'm concerned about adding another, I guess, is there one and a half full-time? Well, there's two full-time employees and one part-time employee. To go to three and a half is very significant when you're two and a half if all you're doing is meeting a very small need for your department, but you're also covering the needs of other departments. To have it all come out of one budget or to increase one budget just doesn't make sense. I, if the needs are based on HR, I would rather have another generalist rather than an administrative assistant.
Thank you. Any, Counselor Mentor?
With respect to the senior program, now that LD 62 has passed and the governor signed it, do we need to have the ad hoc committee meet one more time and discuss what direction we want the program to go in? And then do we need to make a budget amendment accordingly?
I would agree with that, that the committee does have to meet.
Okay. Now, we're, you're scheduled to present on the 16th of May, Mary. Do we want to meet, try to get a squeeze of meeting in between now and the 16th of May so that we have a direction before then? Is that a?
I would, I would say yes, because knowing that we have the information at hand, I think you can't take a blind eye to it. It's going to come up and it's going to be addressed and we would look foolish by not having our ducks in order. So that's one reason why I would agree to. I believe that that's a yes.
I'll try to get one scheduled for next week sometime, toward the end of the week.
Thank you. Any additional questions to my left? Any additional questions or comments to my right? Thank you very much, Ms. Cadillac. Ms. Alice.
All right. Finance department. It feels like it's been four weeks of finance, but really it's been about the other departments. And I'm excited to be able to talk specifically with you guys tonight about the accomplishments of my department. The finance department is made out of eight full-time equivalents, headed by myself, the finance director. I have three direct reports, the tax collector, the accounts payable specialist, and the internal auditor, now functioning in a much more robust and expanded role thanks to the council's approval of that RAD last year. Underneath the accounts payable specialist, we have a finance assistant who is part-time. And then under the tax collector, we have four customer service representatives. The mission of the finance department is to ensure the sustainable, long-term growth of the city of Saco through the collection, disbursement, management, and budgeting of our financial resources. Departmental responsibilities include accounts payable, accounts receivable, tax collection, motor vehicle registration, reporting, analysis, cash management, and of course, the annual budget. Major accomplishments, I've been in my role personally for the, for a year and a half. And the first six months was really a learning process and getting into the weeds of what the finance director was all about. And the last year has been about making changes that I first identified when I started. We've upgraded and migrated Munis to a hosted server that required 241 functions to be tested across 15 modules. And I want to give a shout out to Ryan and his team. They did a lot of work supporting us in the transition, especially when, not, not due to our issues, but due to mistakes that Munis made, there were some, some bumps along the road. And I want to give a shout out to my tax collector and the accounts payable specialist who both did a lot of work on testing all of those functions. We've made 7,515 changes to Munis accounts, codes and settings for simplification and better data management. As Mary Lou referred, mentioned, we collaborated with human resources on the migration of payroll from Munis to paychecks. That required the development of 18 payroll policies, 154 time off policies, 17 different styles of time entry, and 248 other miscellaneous items that had to be tested and resolved. And I would say 50% of that work happened in the last two weeks while we were trying to get W2s and 1094Cs out. So January was a crazy month, but again, tight collaboration with human resources and the tech department to pull that off. And we're really proud of what we're seeing in paychecks over the last couple of months. The accounts receivable and tax collection team processed 52,271 receipts through the First Hallor and we paid 7,548 invoices through accounts payable. More major accomplishments, this year we instituted an annual review process to provide in-person and written feedback to all members of the finance team. I received feedback that it was the first time in many years that individuals on the team had received any feedback on their performance. And I think it was successful and we got some learnings for next year. Another initiative was cross-training on major functions. The tax collector has been trained on mid-year address changes. The finance assistant can now do a complete check run from invoice entry to check printing. The finance clerks have all been cross-trained on critical functions and the new internal auditor can do monthly journal entries now. We've also worked to identify new revenue sources that can offset increases to the mill rate. We presented to the state delegation a recommendation to close the loop on watercraft excise tax and also forwarded that recommendation on to Maine Municipal Association. I also worked to prepare materials for Kevin's testimony to the state on state revenue sharing. Financial wins. Where would we be without saving some money? $630,808 saved over the last year. I worked with the IRS to negotiate the city's payroll liability. I researched and returned retainage to the general fund as revenue. I investigated unused funds available to support a lecture series and then handed that project over to the mayor and the city administrator. I consolidated three cash accounts with our high-interest earning account, Bangor Savings Bank, canceled unnecessary property insurance coverage, aligned our interest renewal with the fiscal year, completed a detailed benefits audit for the fiscal year 2020 budget process, reduced printing costs by 70%, and negotiated to reduce our licensing costs on Munis for fiscal year 2020 after a bumpy migration experience. All of that translates into a return on the finance director's salary at least of 475%. But I can't take sole credit for the work that I've done over the last year. The time that was made available to me to identify these savings and to follow them through to completion was only made possible by the decentralization of the finance and HR departments prior to my arrival. Not only that, but the tax collector role was split from the finance director role. So if we look at just the incremental costs associated with decentralizing HR and finance, the city council has enjoyed a 385% return on that decision. Just, I just wanted to, to share some good news tonight. All right. An update on our fiscal year 2019 RADs. The internal auditor and The internal auditor, Anne Morrissey, started with the team on December 17th, 2018. She was an extremely qualified applicant, she's got a degree in business, and she's worked with some of the largest shelters in Boston for many years on the finance side. She has jumped right into tackling a number of projects that I found I simply couldn't get to in my daily activities. She's cleaned up our DUNES number management tracking, that's critical for receiving grant funding, that saved us about $4,500. She helped with auditing the employee's salary lines, which helped us identify $41,577 in the WRRD fund, and helped fund that new position that Howard had discussed. She researched our ambulance collections process and forwarded a recommendation on a new collections agency with a 30% reduction in fees and projected to double our collections rates. That's going to get us an estimated $9,500 once we implement it. Some other stuff not so tied to revenue or savings, she's been working to clean up the archives, so that our permanent records are identified and stored in chronological order. Specifically for the finance department, the budget documents and the annual financial reports are part of the permanent record of the city. But in the past, they've been stored in random boxes and very hard to find, so we're getting those set together, and then we're going to be ordering the other archives in chronological order, so if I need to pull a record, I can do so. She's also worked to identify 12 vendors that we could pay with a P-card, rather than through accounts payable, to increase our rebate revenue. And she worked with HR to clean up the Maine Municipal Employee Health Trust reconciliation process, saving about three hours monthly. So, what's our total return on the internal auditor? The city has enjoyed a 278% return on this particular RAD. What are major challenges? Speaking for the first floor, I would say a major challenge is simply maintaining sufficient coverage to ensure a fully trained and certified deputy tax collector. We do have four individuals who work the counter, but if someone's out and someone calls out sick, and then you're trying to get someone to training, you lose headcount pretty fast. And we're working to try and put a plan together to make sure that both our tax collector and our deputy tax collector are fully trained and certified. The other challenge is there's not really a deputy to the finance director. Most departments have at least one deputy. The internal controls that we put in place to protect the city from malfeasance prevent either the tax collector or the accounts payable specialists from bringing a true deputy. The internal auditor has made great progress on cross-training, but of course, she's only available 20 hours per week. The WRRD office manager is another individual who can offer some support to the finance director, but she has many other competing responsibilities. So what are some of the responsibilities the city of Saco faces that don't have any backup? I manage and monitor insurance renewals and payments. That includes workers' compensation insurance, unemployment compensation, municipality, municipal liability insurance, that's all of the insurance that we purchase through our partners, Pacquinn and Carroll, and then the volunteer firefighters' insurance. I am responsible for drawing down payments and closing out CDBG projects. I track and journal payments that have been submitted to the state. I review, select, and close lease agreements on capital equipment. I issue pay and benefits information on shared positions with other communities. I monitor changes in financial regulations and implement appropriate policy and code changes where applicable. I review existing financial policies, including the city code, and make updates as internal procedures change. I'm expected to maximize return on cash balances with investment opportunities, manage the fee schedule, and import valuations from assessing in order to issue the tax commitment every year. More responsibilities, issue, track, maintain, and wind down bond funds, and report the city's financial reports annually through Emma. Maintain payment processors for online and credit card payments. Reconcile our cash accounts monthly, that's about 1,000-plus transactions have to be reconciled through our checking accounts. I reconcile our taxes monthly, and I reconcile our ambulance calls quarterly. I prepare and report on budget tracking year-to-date for both city council and staff. I reconcile and journal TIF funds, and I issue payments to developers where we have credit enhancement agreements in place. I monitor and maintain secondary accounts with Saco, Bedford Savings, and Key Bank. I manage user access on our Bangor Savings Bank accounts. I create new funds in Munis for tracking special revenue. Any and all general ledger questions, including any new accounts that need to be created, accounts that need to be closed, merged, or transitioned, that all comes down to the finance director. And I manage the city's relationship with 15 other financially-related organizations. So all of that is part of the list of things that I do. I mean, in addition to that, I'm doing monthly journal entries, and there are other things that I'm responsible for that weren't on that list, because to a certain extent, the accounts payable specialist or the tax collector can act as a backup. Taking a look at a year in the finance director's schedule, eight weeks are devoted solely to audit and CAFR preparation. So I don't know if any of you have heard some of the buzz about GASB standards and how onerous they are on municipalities and on municipal taxpayers, but eight weeks of my time pretty much sums it up. Now, CAFR preparation starts in July and extends through the end of December, but I'm not spending six months just on the audit. If you were to distill down my time and talk about what I'm spending solely on the audit and the CAFR preparation, it's eight weeks each year. And then I spend six weeks solely on budget development. Now again, that starts in January and extends all the way through mid-May, actually through the end of May with implementation, but really, I would say there's six weeks where I'm doing nothing but budget development. Then we've got paid time off, including holidays, that's another five weeks, and let's say one week for sick time. And what you're left with is only 62% of my time is devoted to the laundry list of items on the previous slide, plus anything that I'm primarily responsible for, but can have a backup during my busy times. So I'm going to put a pin in that conversation and come back to it when we talk about the RADs and the internal auditor role. This is the summary of our budget. So looking back through the last couple of years, you can see that the 2019 approved budget took a bit of a dip versus 2018 actuals. That's because there was a lot of turnover in 2018 in the finance department, and we had to fund some of my predecessor's time while I was out, as well as a temporary employee, to provide coverage, and a lot of overtime when payroll was being managed by the accounts payable specialist, and she was trying to hold the fort down on the finance team. So we were able to kind of clean those lines out of the budget, and that's why 2019 was a little bit lower. The directive budget bumps up. For 2020, that's primarily because of the software. So software expenses were redistributed into the different departments. Munis, our financial software, costs $85,000 a year. So that's a pretty big bump up for our budget, but it's not any kind of increase, it just has to do with redistributing that licensing cost. On the right-hand side, the breakout of expenses by category, base pay, as with everything else we do at the city of Saco, I mean, really, base pay is the lion's share of our budget, 72%. Fees are another 17%, that's mostly Munis, once again. Supplies, primarily postage and envelopes related to the annual tax billing, at 4.6%. Contracts are 4%, that's mostly our partners at RKO for the annual audit. Then we have travel and training and overtime coming together at 1.5%, and then some other miscellaneous categories at 0.8%. This is another view of the budget. Again, from fiscal year 2019 adopted to the 2020 directive is $100,000 change, but most of that is the distribution of Munis costs into the finance budget. The RADs came to, the request that I put forward came to $17,092. The portion that was recommended is primarily related to the additional 1.1% for non-union that was to get our non-union at the same, at the same 3% increase as our union, so that's the 4,500 that was approved. So coming to the next slide, the requests above directives. So what I put forward was a request to increase the internal auditor's hours. She's already kind of proven her mettle, savvy with Excel and some of the tools that I've built, as well as doing her own independent research to identify cost savings. This RAD would allow her to work up to an additional nine hours per week. It would, you know, essentially, it's more of, more of the great benefits that we've already experienced with Anne. We would be able to accelerate the progress of several projects that have the potential to cut costs and increase revenues for the city. And it would allow the internal auditor to act as more of a backup, simply because she'd be in the office more often. The last final thought I want to put forward to the city council is what about making the internal auditor full-time? So this wasn't something that I had put in as a RAD this year, but it would have been an invest-for-growth, sort of thinking about the long-term development of the finance team, and what are the needs for the city in terms of the finance. Why did I wait on putting forward a request to promote the internal auditor to full-time? Well, first of all, we've just made this transition to paychecks. And financial, transitions of software of any kind are very disruptive. Paychecks was particularly disruptive, requiring a lot of training and internal development. I want to wait and see, now that we've gotten through the transition to paychecks, how my time is freed up. Hopefully, the letters from the IRS will slow down, the negotiations, you know, and some of the reporting that I've been doing no longer necessary. I also want to wait and see, I've done a lot of work automating the annual financial report, now pulls directly from the database in Munis. The budget book now pulls directly from our database in Munis. I would like to see how the impact of those reporting automations reduce possibly the need for an additional headcount in our department. What would be the benefit of having a full-time internal auditor that could act as a backup to the finance director? Well, first of all, we would have a true backup on that laundry list of things that right now sort of rests solely on my own head. Additionally, she could work to improve and increase P-card usage, that could get us more in terms of rebate revenue. Something that I've wanted to work on but haven't had time is to develop an investment strategy for our fund balance. Already, year-to-date, our interest revenue is at double what we had budgeted, and that's just from a repo account that's basically tied to the federal interest rate. What could we do if we took a more, if we took a more strategic approach to our funds? And then another project is to work with Public Works on financial tools for reducing our waste management costs. And that is what I had for you this evening.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any questions to my right? Any questions to my left? Oh, Counselor Copeland.
A quick little question. You talked about a lecture series?
Oh, yes. That's the, so part of the city trust account affords $5,000 a year for a lecture series that can be used as a fundraiser to support charitable local institutions, specifically the Saco Providence Fund.
Association.
Association, Saco Providence Association. So in conversations with Eric Purvis, who manages the city trust account, he had mentioned these funds had not been used in some time. And so I started doing some research, and then eventually, the mayor and the city administrator kind of took over that project. I don't know if you have an update for-
It seemed as if there was a 501(c)(3) corporation that had gotten inactive, and that was the Saco Providence Association. And through Mr. Sutherland's contacts, he was able to get that organization moving again. I believe that they have submitted all of the 990s that they had failed to submit over a few years. So they're now current that way, and I think they're reorganizing their board so that they can once again be funding lectures, so that the revenue from that can then be spent on the worthy poor, which is, I think, part of their organizational description.
That is correct, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Well, I sat there with you, so we both learned. Counselor Copeland.
So we're funding a 501(c)(3)?
No, we are not. What we did is we got them going again. So I don't know about the-
So the, it kind of fell off the radar screen for several years. In fact, some of the members of that organization-
Passed away.
Passed away or have been disconnected. We found someone who's related to one of the original family members and are rebuilding the organization, but by state law, it's a fund in which sits as a sort of an account on the side that we manage financially?
Yeah, it's a little confusing. So the city trust account is comprised of funds that were dedicated for specific purposes. Roughly $5,000 a year is made available to finance a lecture series, which can be managed, you know, it's to be assumed by the city or by some organization in the community that's interested in hosting such a thing. The proceeds from the lecture series are then in turn to be donated to the Saco Providence, Providence Association, with the intention that the funds would be used to serve the worthy poor of Saco. So I'm forgetting now the individual who left the money to the city, but his vision was sort of a win-win, where his money would go on to service these lecture series that would be of benefit to the community, and then the money from the lecture series would in turn go to benefit the poor of Saco.
What are the lectures about?
Oh, it, any topic, can be any topic.
Yeah. So it's sort of on the radar, once the Saco Providence Association is up and running, to return this as a larger conversation to the city council and say, who do we want to manage the lecture series? Do we want organizations like the Historic Preservation Society to sort of submit requests for funds, and then they can do a lecture series? Or do we want to have a separate organization run it? But we had to get the Saco Providence Association stood up first, before we could start having lecture series, because otherwise, if you have a lecture series, what do you do with the money?
The lecture series is part of the bequest made by Cornelius Sweetser in the 19th century, and it's still going on, being managed by a committee of the city, and-
And our intent is to-
Who's on the committee?
Our intent is to, it's, it's defunct right now. We have to fix the Providence Association first. We'll bring this to the council in another, probably two months.
The Sweetser, the city trust committee is an operating committee. It has Eric Purvis-
Right.
Joshua Hattieris, and Elizabeth McKenna. And in fact, this council put Attorney Hattieris on the commission, on that committee, in fact, only about a year ago.
Yeah, so the city trust account sits in the city code, and I can get you the exact language, just so you have it as a reference. And it's managed by a board that's appointed by the city council, but it operates completely independent from the city, other than the fact that it sits on our books as a dedicated fund. And then they monitor and track revenue from the nest egg that was left by Cornelius Sweetser and dole out proportionally to the interest earnings that are generated off of that fund to different organizations, and the lecture series is one of them.
Is there any of his money left?
Yeah, the, I don't think we've ever touched the balance, and I mean, it's grown significantly over time. I don't know what amount he left, but I believe, I don't have the numbers off the top of my head, but I can get them for you if you're interested, or you can look through the annual financial report, and the trust account is in there.
It's in the audited financials every year.
Yep.
Any additional questions, Counsel Copeland? Counselor Mentor.
Thank you so much for being here. It's obvious you have a cold, and I deeply appreciate the fact that you're toughing it out tonight. That being said, doing my best Johnny Carson Karnack the Magnificent, I expect you're going to be taking some leave toward the end of July, early August.
Yes, yes, that is, that is the plan.
That's probable.
Just careful with HIPAA, you know?
Yeah, we're trying to keep HIPAA comfortable.
Yeah.
That being said, what are the plans for your backup during that timeframe?
So the plan is to allocate some additional time to the internal auditor. She's going to do, she's going to be my backup on the journal entries for sure, and I'm going to be cross-training her on the bank reconciliation, so someone's at least getting in and taking a look at the bank statements. Those are the two, I would say, critical functions. It's really important to make sure that we're reconciling our accounts. I will be out for, for two months, and then working pretty much exclusively on audit prep in September, part-time. So this is a good test to see how good the cross-training has been, or will be, the cross-training that I'm working on over the next couple of months. And if it, if things don't go as smoothly as we're hoping, then I'll probably be putting forward a request for a full-time internal auditor as part of next year's budget process. forward a request for a full-time internal auditor as part of next year's budget process.
Okay, maybe we should make the RAD for that now, while we're still at this part of the budget, so we've got that coverage in place.
Any other questions to my, or comments to my left? Any additional comments to my right? Counsel Archer.
Yes, just in concern, once you bring up a nonprofit, I go to 990 searches, and I see it's been about 10 years since they put forward. 2007, they had about $140,000, and then a year later, they were down to, give me one second, $33,000. Why such a significant drop, when you're saying they're funded by interest? Again, this is the IRS report.
It's a separate entity. We don't track...
No, I'm just...
No, you're looking at their 990.
Yes.
That they had prepared.
So the 990 of 2007 was $172,000.
And the Finance, and the Finance Director has no control over the Saco Providence Association?
I'm just asking, do we know what led to it?
We do not.
Okay, so just to clarify, the Saco Providence Association and the City Trust Account are separate.
That's right.
So the body that manages the, what Cornelius Sweetser and a few other individuals left to the city has a total nest egg investments of $685,157, and that balance has remained pretty much the same from year to year. They're very responsible about doling out only interest revenue in terms of payments to supported agencies. The Saco Providence Association only ever received the revenue from the lecture series, so whatever people paid in tickets. But what you're identifying in terms of changes is part of the concern that we had once we started sort of digging into this, and why the mayor and the city administrator have worked with them to try and get everything pulled together, because there are other organizations, I believe, that contribute money to this organization, so it's important as a community to make sure that it's sound financial. But I wanted to make that distinction. The Saco Providence Association is separate from the City Trust Account, which is well and responsibly managed by its board.
Perfect.
Additional questions to my right? Questions to my left? Ms. Ellis, thank you very much. Mr. Sutherland.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Sorry, still here? She go?
Okay. I've invited my staff to be here for this presentation, as they have assisted in preparing it for this evening. Administration, our vision is a high quality of life for Saco citizens, and central to this vision is a sustainable economy that offers an opportunity for everyone to have rewarding employment and for businesses to prosper now and in the future. The people of Saco bring this vision into reality by working together and building on our tradition of hard work, dedication, and ingenuity. Our department responsibilities are budgeting, performance management, grants and projects management, marketing communications. You can see the organizational chart is based on the current existing organization, and I will be talking about a few proposed changes and how I intend to accommodate those. Major accomplishments are charter amendments, and, sorry, I have to pull up my notes. I included a few notes. We had, oh, man, we had seven charter amendments this past year that were approved by council that then went to the voters in November and will be in effect in July, as of July 1st. And I wanted to touch on those real quickly. The first one was the staggered terms for council and the mayor, and extending them to three-year terms instead of the two-year. Your second one was to have the mayor preside over the school board. The third one, I believe, was the necessary departments. I'm pulling this out of my head instead of remembering where my slide was. Thank you. Yeah, wow, I didn't, I didn't, pretty good. So revisions to necessary departments was the third one. The fourth one was public notice on public hearings, reducing, there was some language that differentiated two different locations in which we had to report about the budget. We made it sound as one. So next year, the, we'll be saving about $1,000 to not have to publish twice about the budget. Gender neutrality throughout the charter, this brings us into the 21st century way of looking at our governing document. The sixth one was regular budget meetings between city council and the school board, transparency and accountability, and ordinance information to be published was the seventh one. This is summary version of ordinances in the paper, saving us resources. The ordinance creation and updates, we had, that's not on this, but... We had, I think, seven, no, 10 different charter, or chapters of the code that we have updated this past year. Everything from code, in administrative code, Chapter 4, which was Economic Development Commission, we created a blasting ordinance this past year, we updated electrical just recently, we've updated marijuana just recently, and we updated the animals section related to the beach management agreement that the council passed, we updated our solid waste. So there's a host of ordinances that this council has, has taken the time to review and make recommendations for changes and finally approve. And that's time-consuming on our staff to make sure that that information is correct, and it also involves attorney review. We've updated nine, no, seven TIF districts, and we've added another one. We've gone through 11 budget amendments to provide more transparency and having council support with changes that we've made. That'll also put us in line with our auditors come the close of the budget, or close of the fiscal year. And then, big one has been the rezoning initiative, and this has been a multi-step process, everything from the council supporting the creation of a steering committee, hiring our consultants through a RAD from last year, to actually having the zoning committee do a SWOT analysis in December, a public community survey with over 1,000 responses, a charrette in February, and the committee, the steering committee has met twice now, and will be meeting tomorrow night as part of my administrative update, and encourage any of the counselors or the mayor to attend to hear about some of the changes that are being proposed, a reduction in the number of uses that are written, redefining them, and even looking at a few of the zones themselves to consolidate. So there are some big changes that we're considering. Thank you, Emily. Union negotiations, we've negotiated six union contracts for fiscal year 19. There are five completed related to fiscal year 20 and 21. Saco was awarded an Opportunity Zone designation this past year. We're the only one in York County, only one in York County for the census tract that's along Route 1 corridor. We're continuing to work with Shalom House for their CDBG grant that was awarded in fiscal year 2018. We were awarded two CDBG grants in fiscal year 2019, Port Resources and Main Seafood Ventures. We work with Saco Main Street on a pedestrian bridge grant through the Seawall Foundation, and are in the process of securing an EDA grant funding for infrastructure and a new business park expansion. We've issued 15 bids and RFPs. Those are all done through our department. Saco has been actively engage, has been actively engaging interns since the summer of 2016. We've been modifying our program to maximize the learning opportunities for its participants. This year, we have designed a holistic municipal internship experience that will provide exposure to each municipal department while also working on some major projects for the city. For consistent messaging, Emily presented at the MT-CMA conference last August about the importance of effective municipal communications. I've asked Emily to be here tonight to present a few of the marketing communications accomplishments from the last year. We've, Saco has had very good representation at MT-CMA over the last three years. In fact, we've had the highest ratings of acceptance of the presentations, and all of them have had involvement of Saco staff. So we're really well represented among the main town city managers, but I think the biggest one, and the biggest kudos goes to Emily, because she had, I keep telling her, come back next year, come back next year. So I'm going to provide a few slides for Emily.
I prefer the podium. So as you're all aware by now, we underwent a strategic marketing planning process with our amazing stakeholder group that resulted in a new logo, tagline, and brand identity for Saco. As part of this, we developed a brand style guide that was adopted by council that included our marketing deck, email signatures, PowerPoint themes, and some of those materials that you've all received. Additionally, I've been working with departments to ensure there's consistent messaging. It's really important for us to develop a clear, concise message and then make sure we're communicating that to the, to the public or to whomever the end user is. And then following this rebranding initiative, we redesigned our website to include a fresh look, improved navigation, and optimized user experience. So I'll continue to reorganize different documents as we crawl through the website to make these final improvements, improve the navigation even more, and then again, work on consistent messaging on department landing pages and making sure people can find the information they're looking for. One of my focuses during the last year has been capturing photos of community events, businesses, and recreational opportunities in municipal departments in action. So I've included a few here, just as an example of that. We are fortunate to have a few local photographers who love sending us their photos to help showcase and promote Saco. And since we live in such a beautiful area, there's a lot of content to work with, which makes my job in that aspect a little bit easier. And we focused on pitching positive stories to the media, such as working with Parks and Recreation on the return of the Veteran Memorial Plaque, Coffee with a Cop with the Police Department. We had 207 come and cover a segment on that, and I'd like to focus more on increasing our positive media pitches in the upcoming year. We've increased our social media presence and frequency of posts. We consistently have new likes and followers on Facebook each week. Our Facebook community is really engaged. Despite only using organic posts, we're not paying to promote or sponsor posts. We have, in the past, we did for the Bond Initiative to make sure we could reach as many people as possible, but we're really mindful of that expense and try to make sure we reserve that for when we absolutely need to. And then we'll reevaluate our strategy as algorithm shift. So I follow a lot of podcasts and blogs, and the social media platforms are changing daily, so it's important just to stay on top of the best way to use those platforms and which content works on which platform. We launched Instagram in August of 2018, and we've already passed 1,000 followers. Twitter, we haven't found to have the same level in, as engagement, same level of engagement as the other platforms, but I will make sure I post content more consistently on that in the future. And Saco joined the Main Public Relations Council, and that's where Jean Saunders received the Midge Freeland Public Service Award. And again, having a municipality represented in that group, Portland is a part of it, and I believe Auburn just joined, but having Saco be a part of that group has been really rewarding and beneficial to us. And then I've worked with different departments on their social media strategies and communication campaigns. I'd say one of the best examples of this is the Socks for Seniors social media campaign, and we were able to generate a record number of donations. And then working with Saco Parks and Rec and Age-Friendly Saco on the AARP Livable Communities video for the Mobi Mat installation at Bayview Beach, and coordinated significant media coverage for that event. Can you go to the next slide? So I worked with the Public Works Department to prepare two Every Door Direct mailings to educate the community about the transfer station service changes and recycling best practices, and then worked collaboratively with Planning and Development, the Chamber of Commerce, and Saco Main Street on ribbon cuttings, groundbreaking ceremonies, and other business promotions. And we've assisted departments with event flyers, job advertisements, and recruiting brochures. I've also worked with the Planning and Development Team to prepare marketing materials for MARIDA, which is one of the economic development conferences that they attend, and will be working collaboratively in the coming months to develop additional materials, as well as some wayfinding signage. And then I worked with Parks and Recreation to prepare a recreation guide brochure featuring our beautiful parks, trails, and beaches, and other outdoor recreational opportunities. And I think, Kevin, you're next.
Touching on the RADs from 2019, current year, an update on those. The executive assistant was included. Executive assistant manages our reserve of meeting space. For a while, we tried to do this just solely by informing the public to just log on, and they could set up their own account, and they can get in, and they can set up meetings with them. We really had a challenge with getting everyone on board with that. So we've really put a face back on that program, and there are some individuals who can still meander through the website to sign up, but there are others who do really need a face-to-face to make sure they reserve a room in our, one of our facilities. We, executive assistant assists and actually prepares all of the council packets for you every week, and seeing how we're meeting three times a month, a lot of her time is dedicated to this, probably 20 hours a week. Provide customer service for citizens who walk in the door, and phone calls as well, and assist department directors and counselors who have needs or requests if I'm not available to assist them. The citizens back, citizen satisfaction survey, we are currently preparing an RFP for release in probably late May, early June to get a survey done. We just received great feedback from the community through the rezoning survey, and to prevent survey fatigue and maximize the data collection opportunity, we decided to wait until the end of the budget process and the end of the fiscal year. We had intended, we were looking at doing it for this fiscal year and include it as part of the budget process, but I think if we do it in June, July, and August, we'll be able to pull some information that we can use to help streamline our decision-making for the fiscal '21 budget process. The last piece is on the marketing operating, operating budget. I, again, have relied on Emily to, to monitor this and prepare some slides on what she's worked on.
So we worked with Bitterford on two advertisements in Main Biz as part of our Make Your Mark in Main campaign. I worked with Denise Clavett to develop the copy and graphic design for both of these shared ads. The cost to place these ads was about $5,000. So Denise has a lot of experience from some of the other municipalities she's served at and has identified that we can take a more comprehensive approach and reevaluate where we are placing these ads. So I'll be working with her to develop a more targeted marketing strategy and make sure we're targeting the proper audience and optimize our mediums. Then $19,200 of the funding was allocated for the video production support RFP for the department video series. So we have produced two of these and have two more in process, but these have been delayed due to some of the scheduling conflicts and competing priorities. Trying to get representation of every shift at the police department or fire department was a little bit more challenging than I had originally anticipated, but we're working through these, and I'm really proud at how a lot of these have turned out, and the employees have really been excited to participate in this process, and it's been nice to get to know some of the colleagues that I've never met before. And then, if you can go back, oh, okay.
Oh, you don't want this yet?
Just pause it. So we also produced two recruiting videos for the police department, and this is one that Kevin will pull up in just a moment, but we've, in addition to that, we've started testing 30-second business promotional videos. You may have seen the one for Kiro Cafe that we did for their reopening and ribbon cutting. These perform really well on the social media platforms and have a high level of engagement, and so I'll talk a little bit more about that in the RAD section. And then lastly, we've purchased tablecloths, trade show, the trade show booth TV and stand, and we've been able to share these with all the departments, so if they go to a recruiting event, or if they go to some sort of trade show or a business event, then we all have one designated place they come, and they reserve the stuff from me, so not each department is buying a tablecloth for once a year, or a TV that they'll take out of the box once a year. So we've already had, the police department has used this for two events, and the fire department has an additional event coming up, and the police department has another recruiting event that they'll be attending, in addition to the economic development events that Denise and Emily attend. So if you want to show the video, I don't know if you want to sit through the whole thing, but...
We serve our community with dedication, pride, and commitment. Come to the Saco Police Department. We serve our community with dedication, pride, and commitment. I have a lot of people point out to me that they really like the way they're treated by Saco police. And my response to you is, well, the police like the way they're treated by the citizens here. So it's, it works both ways. We treat the people well, but the people treat us well. So I think that not only is Saco police-friendly, they're just friendly in general, friendly by nature. So it makes it really nice to live and to work.
You got extra points for that.
You got extra points for that.
The Saco Police Department is a good place to work because of the commitment. We're here 24/7, day in and day out, and you will get the same response from the police, whether it's Christmas afternoon or whether it's just a regular workday in May.
Being a school resource officer has been one of the most rewarding things I've done in my career at Saco Police Department. Being able to interact with the kids on a day-to-day basis has really built a sense of community. But once you break that barrier, like, they love you, they give you the high fives, the fist bumps, the hugs, it's awesome.
The department itself is very welcoming. They're very excited to get new...
So this will be released later this week, so we'll just move on with the presentation since it's not really playing correctly. And I can email it to all of you so you can watch it on your own time as well. Kevin, if you want to take over?
Some of our department's major challenges are a lot of requests for information, just both through the FOIA process as well as calls from citizens about what they need or want or better understanding of. I'm challenged with the amount of misinformation that's out there, and the expectation that my office will be able to quickly respond in a positive way has been a challenge. Community continues to grow, and with that come demands with limited resources. Businesses looking to expand or relocate to our area is a good thing for us, but it is a time-consuming component of what we do, working with our economic development staff. Social media monitoring, the administrative updates is one attempt to try to get that information out there, but sometimes it's too slow. So a lot of what we do is through the social media campaigns. And I hope that all of you are following us on Instagram, Twitter, and Facebook, if you're, you know, using any of those.
They all are.
What's that?
They all are.
Emily says you all are, so thank you. And then staff recruitment and retention. We do assist, as I mentioned before during human resources presentation, we are assisting in a lot of this recruitment and retention, developing material, as you saw a few examples of. And we are delving into LinkedIn and finding other ways to post our jobs in other locations. Budget summary, you've seen this for each department. Our directive, again, is tied to, a bit of that is tied to our IT-related material. And our recommended budget is actually a reduction because I'm moving some of those resources out of my department and into human resources. The base pay is about 75%. Oh, that's the big jump. Utilities for, all of the utilities from this building are in the administration's budget now. They were under a budget line under Facilities Management, which was monitored by code enforcement in the past, but now is part of Public Works. So that budget piece is now in administration's responsibility. Here's another way to look at the budget summary, in the dollar numbers. Our recommended budget is $411,000 for Administration and City Hall. Again, I was looking at the, I'm looking at two requests above the directive within my department, and I'll go into a little bit of detail on each of those. So the increase for non-union wages, as part of the directive, non-union employees are looking at a 1.9% wage increase. This is a RAD that would bump them up to the additional 1% to match the union employees' wage increases. I am concerned about wage compression, where you have union employees who are bumping up against their supervisors who aren't seeing as much of an increase. And in some cases, those positions are actually making more when you count in overtime than their supervisor. And this is a very competitive job market, so I am concerned about continued retention and recruitment for this. So I have included that as part of my recommended budget to the council. It is above the directive, but it is, again, a RAD. The grants and projects duties. So I want to talk about the job position and what that job has been doing or would be doing if I were to refill it again. Grants administration, department-specific grant preparation. So it's very heavy involvement between the grants person and the department. I would look to push this back to the departments to prepare their grants. The business development specialist would absorb all of the CDBG responsibilities. And after Glennis's presentation, I'm a little hesitant to say this, but I would look to have the internal auditor assist in the grant expenditures and reporting. And for the special projects, again, back to the departments that may be heavily involved in it, and then administration would have to take the lead or support those projects on certain ones. Funding shift, administrative assistant for human resources and a communication coordinator underneath Emily. The communication coordinator responsibilities, record all city council meetings and workshops.
That's mine.
Oh, sorry. I'm stealing your thunder.
So one of the primary duties of this position would be to record city council meetings and workshops. We've tried using volunteer students in outsourcing this in the past, and there are several challenges with that. So the recommendation would be, in order to have a reliable person who will do this, it should be an employee. So the proposed communications coordinator would also be able to optimize the recordings and the functionality of it. So we can add a banner at the bottom of the screen that displays which topic is being discussed. So people who are following along at home, if they're just tuning in, it's a little bit easier for them to jump in. They can check back to the agenda and see which item that you're on. And then also, feedback we've heard, I'd like to add an executive session screen so that when the room is empty, they don't think that somebody hit the switch at TA and we're accidentally broadcasting, but that you're in executive session and you'll be reporting after executive session. Another responsibility for this individual would be the videography and photography support. So right now, one of our challenges that I alluded to briefly, we don't usually have enough notice when something's happening at a department to be able to schedule that third-party videographer. So having somebody in-house who has the skill set to shoot that material, edit these videos, and turn them around quickly is a good way to reach the users in the way that they're currently consuming information. And Facebook is trying to be competitive with YouTube, so their algorithm prioritizes live video and uploaded MP4s. So at events, right now, it's challenging to livestream, capture something via video, and take photos simultaneously. So Tori is kind enough to jump in and help, but she's often assisting with other tasks at events, and so she doesn't always have the time to be able to provide that support, even though she kindly offers to help whenever she can. Then the video content that this person would produce could also be uploaded to our YouTube channel and shared on the education and government channel that we currently underutilize. And as I mentioned previously, we've tested a short video for the Kiro ribbon cutting and reopening. We've already had several other businesses reach out to us asking if we can do a similar video for them. These short-form videos perform really well and have a large reach, so this is another opportunity to promote the amazing businesses here. I envision us being able to showcase the beaches, the parks, the trails, doing some of these mini videos that showcase the great assets here, but also the dedicated staff who work here. Another responsibility would be graphic design support and digital content creation. It would be helpful to have another person who can use Adobe and Microsoft suites as effectively as I can to be able to help departments prepare printed and digital materials, and just have another set of eyes to make sure messaging is consistent, that everything meets our standards for quality, and that they're following our brand style guide and recommendations. Then having everything come through the communications office would allow us to monitor that and ensure those standards are met. And then also, having an additional person on the communications team would allow me to work with each department to develop customized communication plans, work collaboratively with Saco Main Street and other entities to promote tourism, and attend to my other responsibilities. So this would allow us to provide our citizens, businesses, and visitors with materials to reach them where they are and connect them with the information they want. So some of the other duties that communications is responsible for is the website content management, the digital newsletter. We could develop more strategic and robust social media campaigns with following along with the community needs, so we can monitor social media a little bit more closely and see what people have questions about. And then we can promote tourism and fully launch our LinkedIn with the Human Resources Department, and continue to collaborate with human resources and different departments on creative recruiting efforts.
I mean, that's the conclusion of administration's slides. Probably take questions here. I have to touch on the council RADs that I put in there, and a few other RADs that are in the budget.
Okay. Any questions or comments to my right? Seeing none, any questions or comments to my left? Counselor Copeland.
The communications, the extra communications and all the video stuff, we do ask for our meetings to be videoed, and I get that. What about, what about, are economic, it seems like these are economic development-type issues. So is there some way that these could come out of other funds instead of just our general fund?
So some of the marketing material can be paid for, that's related to economic development can be paid for out of economic development, but recording council meetings and having a staff person to do that cannot.
Right, but she's talking about, you know, videoing this, that, and the other thing, and, you know, basically promoting Saco. So I'm just curious how that's an administrative function rather than a business development
Denise is here tonight, so...
Thank you. I think when I came here last and talked about what's in the TIF, there are some line items in the TIF budget that actually talk about marketing for economic development purposes. Those are separate from what these folks are discussing this evening. So we've already talked about that. I've worked with Emily about trying to figure out the components that can be funded out of the TIF. And those would be the specific programs that are specific to driving economic development. We can't fund videography, for example, for council meetings, but we can fund marketing efforts and videography for specific tools used to drive economic development for the city. There are pieces of this that we probably could push, but we'd have to evaluate what components of that would look like.
Thank you. The other thing, the grants, I mean, we need a grants person. That's basically free money. It's like when we see all these other new positions and, you know, we heard how, you know, this person saved like 258% of their, you know, can't we get a grants writer? Because I, you know, I know the police department gets their own grants, this one did, gets their own grants. Why can't we have one that can really just search and find and write really well and get us free money?
So again, that comes down to the question of, does the council support a external grant writer who works specifically with a department? Because a lot of the grants that are available to local governments are tied to very specific needs within a department. So you end up having a department head or a handful of staff within a department who are very involved in writing the grant anyway. So our prior grants and project specialist would spend a significant amount of time with the department to learn about the process and then write it in layman's terms. So the value there was his ability to write the physical grant that would then be presented utilizing the department. We have strong department heads who can write. Can they take on this additional work if they're going to be advocating for this? Yes, I mean, that's the direction I would like to go in, because I...
I'm afraid we're going to lose money. We're going to miss opportunities.
We're not losing money, we're losing out on, we're losing out on potential opportunity to apply for money, but then we don't even have, necessarily have, a very robust understanding of the priorities we'd want to set. So do I have an individual who's our grant writer focused on $5,000 grants? Or are they focused on $50,000 grants or $150,000 grants?
I vote for $150,000.
Well, yes, but there's only so many available that we would be able to apply for. And then the amount of time that goes into reporting for that and for, reporting for it and monitoring the finances for it.
If I could just interject real quickly here, the business development specialist, the job description, has been written to incorporate the components of the former grants project manager to have that in there. So we're going to be working, that person's going to be responsible for grant writing and seeking out grants, whether that is through the federal or local or state or nonprofit. I'm working predominantly on looking at that, so it's going to be a very good part of their budget. And I think Emily wants to chat a little bit about the community development grant program and what she's been responsible for.
Okay. One more second. Our seniors, we have a lot of grants in that area. Would that person be able to help with those type of grants as well?
That is correct. I've been in touch with Jean Saunders, and we've been working on those programs as well.
Thank you.
I think, I don't know if I need to continue, but the grants that Saco has qualified for tend to be almost pass-through grants where we are providing support to different businesses or new programs. And then, so we've worked with Age Friendly Saco to help them with some of their grant applications. The CDBG grants were for different organizations, and we were able to help provide them with some financial assistance in that way. But as we move further away from 9/11, I think for emergency management and the public safety, they've found that the grant opportunities aren't as robust as they were at one time. So with Saco's financial need, we're not as competitive for those. But with the CDBG, that's where we've had the greatest success in our applications for those.
Thank you.
Any additional questions or comments to my left? Counselor Johnston?
The communications coordinator position, is there any chance that future payments could be made through the Spectrum, the new Spectrum contract?
I don't think Ryan's here to talk about where we stand in terms of that negotiation process.
He wasn't saying right now, but I was just throwing that out there as a question.
It is something we can try to negotiate as part of it.
Yeah, my understanding is that this, it depends on how the Communications Commission comes down and their determination about how they're going to control municipal franchise fees. So the discussion at the federal level is that they want cities to prove that we are investing in a cable channel that equates to the amount that we're receiving from franchise fees. So at this point in time, we're bringing in...
There's a delay on the camera upstairs, so...
So Ryan's going to be able to provide more background.
I was taking a nap. So, no, we can't actually fund positions, personnel with the grant money that's given to us from Spectrum. You can use the franchise money as however you please. That's yours, but if we ask for a grant through the Spectrum negotiation, it's got to be very specific in what we ask for.
Capital?
Positions, capital is pretty much all you can use it for.
Yep.
So when it comes to franchise fees, correct me if I'm wrong, but the FCC wanted municipalities to prove that they were spending franchise fees directly on a cable channel.
Yes.
Yeah. So that's where the communications coordinator might be something that eventually becomes self-funded, because if we don't have a communications coordinator, we can't prove we're spending that money on the cable channel. Eventually, the feds may say, well, you can only get the money you're actually spending on the cable channel, which I think right now for the city is maybe $20,000 versus franchise fees that we're getting in the amount of $250,000. So that's the, but that decision has yet to be made at the federal level. That's just kind of what we're looking at right now.
Perfect. So the long-term answer is yes.
Right. Thank you.
And the short-term answer is no.
Well, it could be yes, because as you said, the franchise fees could pay for the position.
The point?
Franchise fees currently are just a bottom line, general fund.
Right. I'm saying we could set funds aside specifically for that position.
Yes, it would protect that revenue going forward, for sure.
Thank you.
Any additional questions, comments to my left? Thank you, Counselor Doyle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Kevin, Emily, Tori, thank you for the presentation. Not to go down memory lane, but I do want to... down memory lane, but I do want to remind folks that in previous budgets, we eliminated an executive assistant because it was said it was not needed. Then, we brought it back in another budget. And then, a certain counselor took a chastising by many folks for talking about getting rid of the grants auditor position, which we're now talking about again this coming budget. So, that's a little bit frustrating, but moving past that, looking at page 46 of the administration line item detail, I'm looking at 5113 under temporary and seasonal wages under expense-based pay. $12,000 is the directive budget. Is that for, is that for interns for this coming summer?
That is correct.
Okay. And we only spent $7,886 last year, or as of February of this year, right?
Correct. But there's still May and June of this year when I usually take the interns in. So, it's a kind of a split between the two sides. Because our fiscal year is July 1st, so June, May and June are when I pick up interns, and I, they're hired, and then they come into the next fiscal year as well.
How many interns are we looking to hire this year?
12,000. It's probably about three at the most out of administration. Other departments might have some funding for additional interns.
So, there may be more than three interns like there was last year, when there was one at the fire department, the police department, and then three in city administration?
Two in city administration.
I'm sorry, two. Moving on to contracts, advertising, 50341. We look at, there's an increased change in the directive from the fiscal year 2019 approved budget of 3,300 to 4,800. Advertising. What are we advertising? If we're hiring communications folks and we're looking to market, what are we advertising here?
Oh, yeah, RFPs, bids and RFPs.
And I see as of February of this year, we've only spent $1,149 out of the approved 3,300, right?
Yep.
So, are we anticipating going up a full $1,500?
Well, any more ordinance changes or charter amendments that we propose to make, we're going to have to pay for advertising for those.
And then, looking at, under equipment, looking at going from the fiscal year 2019 approved budget of $250, which as of February, we spent 96, add in $1,000 to that for 1,250. What minor equipment are we looking to fix or repair or replace?
I put furniture and fixings. I moved some money in there to replace the chairs in my office. The minor equipment might have to do with this new, this position for the communications coordinator? Do you remember what we did there?
I'd have to, we have, like, I can provide more notes for anything.
Okay. Moving on to maintenance and parts. Staff vehicle operations under 50321. There's nothing budgeted previous to this year, and we're looking to increase that $4,000. What is that $4,000 for?
That is tied to the city vehicle is now being paid for out, repairs are being paid for out of the departments. Just like we talked about IT moving, there's also vehicle maintenance that has to be taken care of out of the departments. There is a city car that was owned by, or in a contract with the prior city administrator that is now a carpool car for the city of Saco, or for the city hall, mostly used by assessment. But again, where do you, you either pay for it out of administration, or you pay for it out of assessment.
Wouldn't that be part of the lease, the lease program? No?
It's not, it's not a lease program. That's just the maintenance of this aging vehicle.
Yeah, that particular line item was part of the facilities budget at one point in time, and covered all of the vehicles that currently sit parked at city hall. With the reallocation of the facilities department, we took all the utilities cost plus the vehicle maintenance. So, that's why that came into the administration budget.
Thank you. And moving on to other, city administration, furniture and fixtures, you kind of touched on this, but you're anticipating spending $1,284, which, there was zero approved in FY19, but $899 was spent. So, you're looking at $1,284 for new chairs?
It was the balance of what I had remaining for my 1.9% on everything but salaries. So, I needed some money to replace those chairs, and I had it available to me in the 1.9%. So, I used it to look to buy new chairs for my office.
If you need it. And moving on to supplies on page 47, looking at line item 50301. FY 2019 approved was $520. Currently, as of February 2019, we've spent 235. We're looking at a change of $3,600 to bring that to $4,120? What office supplies are we looking at?
I think that's related to the whole, the whole city. Because again, or, I'm sorry, it's all of city hall. Again, some of the building maintenance expenses rolled into administration's budget. That's why you see a large increase.
This is specifically related to copy paper for city hall.
You see how this is very confusing? And if it's confusing to us up here, it's very confusing to the folks at home who can't see the light item budget-
Sure, all are good questions.
And see the trending that's happening when you look at three-year spreads. So, when I bring this up, please don't think I'm being critical. I'm just trying to provide clarity.
Yeah, no, appreciate it.
Moving on to travel and training on the same page, looking at line item 50322. FY 2019 approved was 2,200. We've spent well above that, and so, the change is an additional 2,500 to get us to $4,700. Are you anticipating that much tuition and training in the upcoming year?
Yep. This is tied to the, the last year was tied in part to the Leadership Matters program we participated in, but I anticipate keeping a higher level of travel and training for the department.
And, okay. And the same thing under travel. We've only spent 688, but we're looking to stay at the 2,200 mark? And I know these are small numbers, but when you add up small numbers, small numbers, small numbers, you get large numbers.
Yeah, and part of my contract involves me attending ICMA. I have not done it in order to try to save some money for other needs within the, within the department. So, I do hope to make it to an ICMA conference at some point, but by contract, I'm, the city's obliged to provide me that opportunity. So, I do budget for it, but if I don't spend it, it goes to the bottom line, or it's used to offset some other major expense within the organization or within the department.
Thank you.
Any additional comments to my right? Any additional comments, questions to my left? Counselor Johnston?
Going back to the grants and special projects position, do you feel that, that this position really isn't unneeded, or is this just an attempt to present a budget that you think this council will approve?
I would, the city would benefit from having this position. The grants and projects, there's, there's a lot of side projects that end up on our, on our plate. The work that was done this past year to collect all of the agreements with the landowners so that we could get the sand pumped onto the beach, that was all the special projects component of that role. Getting the beach management agreement to a place where we felt comfortable that we could manage it and get all of the partners to, at the state and federal level, to sign on to it, again, was project specialist. I don't know who to hand those types of things off to. I will continue to be challenged with that without this role, but I also see huge opportunity and value in this communications piece and the extreme need internally for the administrative assistant and HR. And I was trying to do this being conscious of dollars and headcount. So, that's, that's why I did what I did. I do think that departments have been, department heads have been willing to work with a person in that role. Could they be better at it? Sure. But I also think that they're capable of writing the grants themselves if they're really, if they know about it. If we can find a way to make sure that they're aware of grants that pop up, I'm pretty sure department heads will jump on making the ask. And again, we've asked for a lot through, and Emily brought it up, a lot through, especially the fire department. But we're, our community isn't at a needs base that many of the ones that would be able to get it can. So, that's, that's a challenge we're always going to be faced with. We can apply for things, but we may not be at a needs base that many of the other surrounding communities are. So, I do see the business development specialist absorbing CDBG responsibilities and identifying grants that that can be passed to department heads. And I wanted to, I wanted to see if that's feasible before immediately asking the council for more headcount.
No, I understand, just, my biggest concern, you know, as you know, is that this position played that, you know, right-hand man or woman to you, and you were able to utilize that position to help assist you. And I guess, you know, my fear is removing it, and we're now putting more pressure on department heads, so.
I think some of-
I understand, again, what you were doing. You're trying to resent, like I said, a budget that hopefully council will approve, and adding a position on top of another position likely probably wouldn't happen. But me personally, I'd rather keep that position and, you know, support the needed staff in the other areas. But that's me. Thank you.
And that's, and that's a decision for the council. I will, I will just, one last plug. I see extreme strength in the team that I currently have in my, in my office. And with a communications coordinator, some of the responsibilities that are on Emily currently can be passed down to this individual, and Emily can help with some of those larger projects. She has great rapport with the department heads and an ability to get some of these projects across the finish line. So, I'm hopeful that, again, I'm, I'm trying to, trying to navigate a department and an organization-
Yeah, I understand. I'm trying to be cognizant of the tax dollars at the same time.
So, and I just, I, I told you a few years ago, I could survive without an administrative or executive assistant. I can't. Can I survive without a grants and project specialist? I'll tell you that now, but six months from now, I might be asking for the position. But right now, I think that, given, given the needs within the organization elsewhere, unless they're willing to fund that position as well, I see greater need on these two roles than I do the grants and project specialist.
And then, the last thing I have is, so, last year, you presented the merit pay program, reintroducing it, and, you know, unfortunately, I slashed it, hoping that we would be in a position where the personnel committee would be at a point to reinstate that. I'm just looking for an update, if we're any closer.
As you heard from human resources, our challenges are in multiple different directions right now. I do hope that, and I had asked for that merit pay to be reinstated for a couple of years, and was going to take a year off from asking for it. I think the important thing here is that comprehensive study be done that was part of the use of the training money we had in the budget for this current year, utilizing that to do a real comprehensive study of salaries, where they stand in comparison, and fixing that first before trying to reinstitute some sort of merit pay program.
All right. Thank you.
Counselor Copeland?
I agree with Counselor Johnston about that position. It's just so bothersome that it's going to go. I mean, our neighboring communities have deputy city administrators, and we need you to, like, not be, like, busy be working. We need you to be overseeing and coming up with policy and that type of thing. And we need, somebody needs to do that work. And I don't know why you're getting rid of that position.
I'll, let me put it, I mean, I, I think I explained to this council before. I saw, what I was trying to do was see in the marketing communications and the grants and projects, essentially, a assistant city manager in the role of two. I think there's still a hierarchy organizational challenge with having two individuals who don't necessarily have supervisory responsibility over department heads, trying to get work out of department heads. So, they work well together. They do. All of them work really well together. They're a part of the team. We're a real team-oriented organization. But there are times when I have to interject in order to make sure something gets done because there's a conflict between those roles and a department head. So, unless the council's really willing to say it's time for having a chief operating officer like Bedeford has, or some of the other communities, I don't know how much I want to build in this role again until I know that the special projects piece or the management of the departments can be done effectively. Makes sense?
It does. So, it would be who in the economic development?
So, there is a position, there are four positions within economic, in planning and development office. There's the director. There are two, there's a city planner. There's a business development specialist who hasn't filled yet. We just posted the position. And then, that project coordinator position.
So, is it the project coordinator position?
No, it's the business development specialist. That's the slide I have up right now. They, this person would be absorbing those grant responsibilities. So, again, a lot of those grants are tied to, they're pass-throughs. We help an applicant, because we're not a CDBG community like Bedeford is, we have to essentially apply to the state on behalf of an entity within our community. That's a very business-specific directive. So, I think that's an important role for this person to be responsible for. Taking the CDBG piece out, there are only a handful of grants on a given year, the big ones that really can pay for the position. But then again, are we going to, are we going to receive them? Again, we have the EDA grant out now. I'm still waiting to hear from the, from the federal government about whether or not we're going to get it. I'm very hopeful. But being invited to go to phase two is essentially what we're waiting to do, so. And you have to, yes, you have to, also have to be a certified through the state to be a CDBG administrator.
Thank you.
So, any additional questions to my left, to my right? Let me just restate a point that you made, and that is, you would be submitting a budget amendment, let's say, six months after the fiscal year begins, if you really run into the need for a special project.
Right. I mean, police did it this year with a CID position.
It's not as if, it's not going to be put together. It's just that this particular point in time, you're emphasizing the need for some other staffing. And if, as the fiscal year progresses, you see money is slipping through our hands, you're going to come to the council with a budget amendment. Is that an accurate restatement?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. So, again, do you want to continue, Mr. Sullivan?
I do. I just have a couple other slides for you to consider. I did include two, I didn't, wasn't able to fund them because I was trying to be, again, cognizant of the mill rate. I was hoping to have a conversation about council wages. That's a charter amendment. I do think that you all put in more hours than, you want to talk about minimum wage, Counselor Archer?
No, I said except for you.
Except for you. No, no. But I still think, I still think the, the amount of work you all ask to put in, the amount of work you want to put in, I think you should be paid more. So, I did, I did look at trying to increase that. And I also had an operating budget, and you, I think I explained sort of what I was looking- Oh, yes. About $5,000 for travel and training for you to attend MMA functions, events, some food, snacks and water for council meetings. And the other piece was community recognition. We do a lot, we've been trying to do it on the very cheap, inviting people, members of the community who have done amazing things. of the community who have done amazing things, or we want to recognize them, but we don't necessarily have the funds to pay for it. So I was trying to put a few thousand dollars in there for those needs. Yes, the snacks was for you, Councilor Copeland. In the contingency, I did have a grad for the senior tax relief program, the amount of about $25,000. This was based on conversations with the members of the committee and finance about what we would need to create the program that was recommended by the committee. And we haven't done the work to institute the policies, and I know that the staff in human resources have been treating it as if it had been approved at this point. But there are still several members of the volunteer or senior tax relief members participating in the program who have put up some opposition to all the additional documentation that's been required. So we're going to have to have a conversation about the program and then whether or not the council wants to fund it. And I know my point on this was just having a tax rebate, simply a rebate program in which someone comes into the clerk's office, makes a statement that they're qualified for it, and then there's a process for that. But if the council wants to create the larger program, this is additional resources that are going to be needed. And then I'm asking for another $5,600 for the solicitor fund. That'll bring it up to $150,000. It's not on here. We utilize primarily Tim Murphy from Murphy Prescott and Jamison. We also utilize Linda McGill from Bernstein Schur and Shawna Muller, Mueller, from Bernstein Schur as well for TIF-related. And that, TIF-related items get paid for out of the TIF account, so not out of the general fund. We also bring in a few other attorneys. Thank you. Turning this all out of memory. Perkins, Perkins Thompson, that's again out of the, out of, for the zoning overhaul. We're using Freddie Flaherty for Army Corps of Engineer, Army Corps of Engineer negotiations. And, oh, Jensen Beard is being used for the Switzer parcel purchase, in part because of the conflict of interest with our local attorney, our land use attorney, because he's on the Switzer board, so. Those are the attorneys we use. I intend to have a list of those as part of the approval process on the second week of May.
Any questions to my right? Any questions to my left? Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. The next item on the agenda is the Public Works crew cab lease. So I see Mr. Fox is ready for that.
I'll keep this as brief as possible, but we, it is an item that's time-sensitive and will need a vote next, next week. So I spoke a little bit about this truck actually during my budget presentation. We were hoping to limp it along until FY '20 budget was approved. When you approve the budget, you also approve the right for the finance director to go ahead and secure the leases for the following year. Problem is, it takes, a lot of feedback on this right now, isn't it? The, it takes three or four months if we go out to bid and order a new truck. Crew cab, so this is a crew cab truck. It's the only truck that we have in the fleet. It hauls our, it brings our whole paving crew around from job site to job site, four to six job sites a day, probably. So if I don't have this one that can hold four or five people, then we just have to keep bringing multiple trucks to sidewalk repairs and different things like that. It has a utility body on the back. It carries all the tools that the crew uses and keeps them under lock and key so that when they're parked out along a sidewalk, or if it's parked outside of a store or something, everything's locked up within the truck that is valuable. So I don't really have an alternative to limp through for the next few months. And then the problem is truck deliveries, new truck deliveries are taking three to eight months. We don't have our dump trucks that we ordered last June after you approved the '19 budget yet. So new equipment is taking a long time to get. So I had my fleet manager look around at all options, basically, in New England and up and down the East Coast for used rentals, new equipment that's sitting on a lot somewhere. And there was very, very limited options. But he did come across one truck during the time he was looking at it. It was actually another community in Maine was purchasing it. That purchase fell through. At the same time, we got a quote back saying we could spend $10,000 to $13,000 to repair the truck that's no longer running, which is just, I would never make that investment with my own vehicle. I don't think any of us would if we knew it was due for replacement for dozens of other reasons and wear and tear. So we have an opportunity to, it's really just authorizing the lease a little bit early rather than dump that $10,000 into something we're still going to get rid of.
Thank you. Any comments to my right? Councilor Doyle?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So not too long ago, the council approved a, a program for two, two lease cars or two pool cars. Have we spent that money? Has that program been created? Or could we move that money prior to implementation towards this vehicle?
We, we did purchase those vehicles for the construction inspector and, and the second one for the facility group to go around with the cleaning supplies and whatnot. But we're actually just trying to get the, we've stripped this purchase down as small as we can. I don't really think there's a monetary impact. By the time we secure the lease and make payment within the lease program that we pay, you know, it's going to be a five-year lease on this vehicle, whether it starts in June or it starts now. I don't, I don't think you're going to see a monetary impact to, it's just a shift of the purchase by a couple of months. And I, Glennis and I spoke about this a little bit. There's no, there's no place to pinpoint this is going to be, it's not a budget amendment per se for money. We would have had this money to spend out of our, we would have had to spend it out of our vehicle repair line item. I don't know if you want to add anything, Glennis?
Yeah, I just want to add that this particular vehicle is part of the capital plan for fiscal year '20. So alls we're trying to do is get council's approval, authorization so that we can set up the lease purchase now, and the city can take ownership of that vehicle now instead of three months from now.
Thank you. Any other questions to my right? Any questions to my left? Councilor Smart?
Are you aware if the prior sale fell through because of anything with the truck itself?
Question. Yeah, no, it's a, it's a brand-new, brand-new vehicle. And we're going to actually absorb putting the utility body part on ourselves, because typically we buy and it goes from one vendor to another and takes months and comes back. So we're going to do that piece of it. And we did also, to make sure we're getting the best, the best value, I had our fleet manager price out this vehicle through a cooperative purchasing agency that you can, you can just build your own, you build your vehicle that you want and you get preferred municipal pricing across the country. And this is a lower price that they're giving us because they already have it. They just basically, they have it, they were planning on selling it, now it's sitting on their lot. So they're, they're willing to give us the, a discount below what we could go build one for under the cooperative purchasing agreements.
Thank you. Any other comments to my left?
If you're looking for a resource.
Okay. Councilor Johnston?
Thank you. And the other quick question is, because of next week's meeting and how long it is, is it fine to put this one on the consent agenda?
Does anyone have an objection that this go on the consent agenda? I see no objection. It will be on the consent agenda.
Okay, thank you.
The next item is the capital funding for the Public Works wash bay.
Mr. Mayor, with the time being 10:30, can we defer this to next week and defer with the administrative update since it was emailed to us a little early and move for adjournment?
I'd like to cover this item tonight, and, and then we will skip the administrative update and the council update for adjournment. So if we could have Mr. Fox make his presentation on the wash bay?
Shouldn't be any longer than the truck item, I'm hoping, so.
Hope faster than that.
Yep. So wash bay money ended up in the capital plan. The $325,000 for the counselors that weren't around came from originally, what would it cost to add a wash bay so that we take care of our fleet better and keep it from deteriorating? To add it to the existing Public Works site didn't make any sense. So we started, we then reprioritized it and said, let's go out and look for a standalone regional facility that we could build. Those options, that option made sense to pursue at the time. However, other communities don't want to build a wash facility in Zaco, and we don't want to build a facility in another community. So we have been pursuing talks with Aduie Pile because they're building a truck wash as part of their new facility over on Industrial Park Road. But since we are now in the design of a new Public Works facility, we can add a wash bay to the end of the building very economically and have long-term control over washing our vehicles. And some of our vehicles won't fit through the Aduie Pile truck wash very easily. So we would have to strip our plow gear off our truck. They're doing a fully recirculating facility, which means that we can't send our salt trucks over with the type of salt buildup that they get around the sanding equipment. So we'd have to strip our truck plows, wash our trucks, just to send them over to the automated truck wash. Not very efficient. It is efficient to keep working with them to try to get the school buses in their fleet. They're a nice consistent shape, they fit through the truck wash well, but the construction equipment, the fire equipment, some of the assortment of size and shape we have, it would be really nice to have our own wash facilities. So for a couple hundred thousand dollars, we can add a bay to the building that we're already going to be constructing, extend the concrete slab, extend the radiant floor heating, and also use that bay for vehicle storage when it's not being, so there's a lot more bang for the buck here than when that money was put in the capital plan. So I need to let our design builders know that right now in order to take advantage of that. So we would like to utilize some of these funds to cover that and give ourselves the long-term ability to wash vehicles and our construction equipment in our own facility and not spend all of it signing a 10- or 15-year agreement that we won't have wash options of our own if that agreement dissolves or never comes to fruition, so.
So where's the funds for this? Is it?
Sitting in the capital plan right, it's, nope, sitting in the capital plan right now. There's $325,000 for-
You want to just notify them-
Regional truck wash.
Prior to the beginning of the fiscal year?
Well, our design build is progressing to the point where they're ordering, they're getting ready to order the steel, order the building. They need to know whether we're incorporating this, and I think it's a much better use of money than signing an agreement that's going to end. And if we start breaking a truck wash that's circulating all the water because we're pumping it full of, equipment full of salt.
So are there any questions, Councilor Gay?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Turn your power off.
Is this wash station at the present place, or is it going to be for the new place?
This, this is all for our new building over off of Industrial Park Road.
Okay, thank you.
Any additional questions to my right? Any questions to my left, Councilor Copeland?
Just very quickly, I think it sounds like it's a great idea, but I just need a little bit more information. So where are the trucks currently getting washed, the equipment?
Well, right now, we just wash them in our vehicle storage area. We have a curtain that we pull across, and it's kind of a messy process because it gets the whole vehicle storage area pretty wet. Unfortunately, under the original design of the new facility, we need to have some wash capabilities onsite regardless of whether we have an off-site location. So we were still going to be doing a curtain system within our vehicle storage. This provides separate doors, a separating wall, so that all of the wet environment stays isolated from our dry vehicle storage. And if we ever expand vehicle maintenance, you can do that without going into a wet environment. So if you wanted to use one of the vehicle's storage bays someday for vehicle, an active vehicle maintenance bay with a mechanic in it, you're not mixing those two uses. So a lot of great benefits the more we looked at it, and-
Sounds good. Thank you.
Any additional questions or comments to my left, to my right? Seeing none. Councilor Archer?
You need a counselor.
Councilor Archer. Councilor Archer is taking it.
It's on the consent agenda as well? Okay.
Oh, can we put it on the consent? Is there any objection to the consent agenda?
I would like some more.
So put it into the regular agenda.
Okay.
So with that, without? It hasn't been three years.
Hasn't been three years.
So, excuse me, so is there any, any objection to dropping the administrative update in the council discussion? To my left, to my right?
I just got one comment.
Okay, quickly.
Thank you.
Now you got two.
Wow.
I see, I just want to make a comment. I see a lot of part-time positions employees in certain departments. And if city wants to hire more employees, why not train the part-time employees instead of hiring full-time employees?
Okay, thank you very much, Councilor. And without objection, this meeting is adjourned.